Good evening and welcome to the Northampton City Council. And this is the September 4th, 2025 meeting. I'm Alex Jarrett. As City Council President, I'll be presiding this evening along with Vice President Rachel Mayori. This meeting and all participating in person and on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. The meeting can also be watched on Comcast Channel 15 or by streaming on Northampton Open Media's YouTube channel. I now call the City Council to order. Could you take the role, please?
Counselor Dobbs.
Here.
Counselor Elkins.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Clemmer.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Here.
Counselor Mayori.
Here.
Counselor Moulton.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
And Counselor Rothenberg.
Here.
Counselor President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's highlights include four utility petitions, and those will be taken first before public comment, the warrant for the November 4th election, and an order to suspend parking fees, a zoning ordinance that adjusts parking requirements, and a resolution in support of a rent stabilization bill. First thing on our agenda is a public hearing on 25.279, a National Grid petition to install 1,700 feet of underground conduit on Whittier Street. And we will hear all persons who wish to be heard. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Labarge and seconded by Counselor Moulton to open the hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is now open. And do we have a representative from National Grid here to speak to this? Is the green light on there?
It is now.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Eric Fontaine. I'm a contractor for National Grid. We've been assigned for the U R D on Whittier Street, and we are in the project lead on this project. So the gist of the project is to replace the underground cable that is existing now. It is failing, so I'm sure the residents on that street has been noticing some of the outages and kind of all that stuff. So we're going to be installing conduit and cable to go to the existing transformers and replace the go under stuff.
Is that light on?
It is green.
Great, thank you. So we will next hear from people who are in favor of this petition. If there are anyone who would like to speak on Zoom or in person. Okay, anyone opposed or just has questions?
I will.
I will first hear from members of the public. Okay, I don't see any, so Counselor Labarge. Go ahead.
Thank you. I had a lengthy talk with the girl from the company, which you probably know, but I had great concerns of communicating with my residents on Whittier and also on Park Hill Road. And in question, a resident did come forth to talk on the corner of Park Hill and Whittier that he had spent quite a bit of money on his property and also for his children, that area. So my question is, have, and I know there's 22 people on Whittier, have they been notified? And has anybody notified you out of those 22 people of any concerns?
So none of those 22 people have notified me of any of concerns. And then we, you know, this is the petition here and for that to kind of come forth and kind of address any of their concerns.
Okay, great, thank you.
Would anyone, if you wish to speak, please come up to the podium. And your name and address.
Oh, my name is Jean Simmons. I'm at 55 Whittier. And I just wanted to know if you have some idea of what kind of, how long this would take and how disruptive is that going to be? Is it going to interfere with power or what? Okay.
Yep. As far as timeline, I still have to go through, you know, find a contractor to do the work, National Grid, and then they will have to go and get permits and all that stuff. So I don't have a great time of how long it would be take when you stop to see crews working on the road there. And as far as outages, there will be minimal outages. We're going to have the power on, and then the idea is to install the cable along or parallel with the existing cable now. So and then, you know, and then we'll do the final switch over at the last minute when everything ends up and running.
Would anyone else like to speak? Counselor Rothenberg.
Do you know how long the work itself will take once it starts?
I do not. No, they could hit ledge, they could hit anything, so I, you know, don't feel comfortable giving a timeframe and be held to it, so I do not know.
Follow-up, could we just have a range, reasonable range for the neighborhood?
Sure. Probably take about three weeks, two weeks.
There's someone in the audience? Come on up.
Hi, in the notices, it describes.
Your name and.
Sorry. My name is Gaurav Jishnani. I live in Ward 6. And I am wondering, in the notifications, it states that the digging will, seeks access to up to six feet from the road into our properties. And I'm wondering what if any cleanup, what if any replacement of the yards of how they were prior to the digging will take place? If it's just going to be like a huge hole in our yards left behind, if there's going to be some work done to replace whatever damage is done by the digging? And if traffic will be blocked or what the implications will be for traffic on the street?
As far as the digging, we're actually going to be using horizontal drilling. So there's going to be a machine that's going to be set up, and they're going to set like vacs, vacs, excuse me, vac dig, which is kind of like sheeting water into the ground and make a about a four by four hole. And then the machine will actually purse a rod through the ground to the soil all the way to the next opening, the transformer. And that will minimize all the digging and trenching that's going the long way. There will be pole boxes, about four by eight pole boxes in front of the transformers to kind of intercept and be able to kind of trench it through. As for the restorations, there will be backfilling and, you know, souding and seeding the, you know, as it was. Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments on this petition? Okay, thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Clemmer, seconded by Counselor Elkins. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thank you. We will move on, and the vote on that comes later in the consent agenda. We'll move on to the second public hearing, which is 25.278 National Grid Verizon pole petition for Michaelman Avenue. This is to relocate one jointly owned pole, pole number two, on Michaelman Avenue approximately 16 feet east towards Pleasant Street to correct overhead trespass of aerial conductors to abutting properties. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Who'd open?
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Moulton, seconded by Counselor Clemmer. Any discussion? Roll call, I mean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is now open. Welcome. Are you also from National Grid?
Yes, Ken Kriegel for National Grid, the local designer on this one. The pole on Michaelman was replaced only, I believe, four years ago, but it was replaced in the other direction. And then they upgraded the service at 10 Michaelman, and we can't have the overhead wire crossing a neighbor's property, and it's too heavy to tap in the middle of the line. So we're moving the pole essentially a few feet past where it was four years ago to the property line.
Counselor Elkins.
I'm having a little hard time hearing with the conversation.
Yeah, if you're, if you could take conversations out of the room so that folks can hear. Was that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Repeat if needed.
I got it, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone from members of the public who would like to speak to this petition? On Zoom or in person? Okay, seeing none. There any questions from councilors? Okay, thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Who took close a hearing?
Second. A motion made by Counselor Labarge and seconded by Counselor Perry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. We will move on to the third public hearing, a public hearing on 25.302, a National Grid pole petition for Glenwood Avenue to support additional services to 39 Day Avenue. And I would entertain a motion to open the hearing.
Make the motion to open the hearing.
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Labarge and seconded by Counselor Clemmer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
No.
So that was eight yes votes to open and one no vote to open from Counselor Rothenberg. Public hearing is now open. And welcome again.
So this petition is to add a new pole at the end of Glenwood, right at the property line of 39 Day Ave, to support services to seven new residences that have been built on the property.
Okay, thank you. There is a new letter that's on the agenda from a new DPW recommendation, and so updated. And I am going to read that so we are all aware, since it was just updated earlier. I'll summarize. There are no conflicts with city water, sewer, or drain lines. However, the new pole is proposed will require the removal of an eight-inch oak tree, the only remaining public shade tree on Glenwood Avenue. The city's tree warden has determined the tree to be in good condition. A review of the available space in the tree belt on the north side of Glenwood Avenue indicates that it is too narrow to support new tree plantings, and the utility wires on the south side limit the height of any potential plantings. It should also be noted that the south side tree belt is narrow. I met with Ken Kriegel from National Grid at the site Thursday, August 28th. This is from Donna Lascalia, DPW Director. To discuss the proposed pole installation confirmed that the tree would need removal and determine available options. My findings are as follows. The pole petition as submitted will require the removal of the tree. National Grid has identified alternative options to provide the necessary electric service to 39 Day Avenue that do not require the removal of the tree. Given that the oak tree is the only remaining public shade tree on Glenwood Avenue and that there are other options for providing electric service to the site, I respectfully recommend the council vote no on petition 25.302, which will allow National Grid to resubmit a petition which both preserves the tree and delivers the infrastructure necessary to support this development. Are there questions from councilors or Director Lascalia? Would you like to add anything?
Hi, good evening, councilors. I think that the memo summarizes things nicely. Normally, we're able to work out these tree-related conflicts as part of our trench permitting process. You know, we do a little trimming or, you know, move the pole, you know, a couple of feet this way or that way. This is really a sort of intractable conflict. There are no options. The pole petition as submitted will require the removal of the tree. And given it that it is the only remaining public shade tree on the street and that there are alternative options to deliver power to the site, that's why I submitted memo with the recommendation that I have.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors before we go to members of the public? Okay, are there any members of the public on Zoom or in person who would like to speak to this petition? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Nancy Mahavec. I live on 51 Day Avenue, and I am an abutter to the property that this is concerned with. I respectfully request that this item be removed from the consent agenda. There's a backstory that people should know here. As you noted, the development to be served consists of seven buildings on approximately one-quarter acre of land. The developer initially planned for a transformer to be installed very near the proposed fence on the property line with 35 Day Ave and close to Glenwood Avenue. At the planning board meeting, abutters of the development pointed out that the transformer location was not feasible, that it was too crowded, and more clearance was needed. Unfortunately, the abutters were ignored on this point. When the electric company came to the site, they indicated that the location of the transformer was not feasible because it was too crowded, more clearance was needed. As a result, they had to find another way of getting electricity to the development. We've already heard about the oak tree, which is going to be my next point. Clearly, we would have to remove the oak tree in order for this pole to go up, and we firmly and strongly recommend against doing that. There are other options for getting electricity to the units, so we strongly urge the city council to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to Zoom. Sharon, your name and city or town, please.
Hello, why is it here? Who is Sharon? My name is Jesse Felter, Northampton, and I live on 72 Glenwood. And I'd be interested to hear what the alternate solutions to the proposed plan are.
Thank you. We will take all public comment first and then go back to answer questions. Is there anyone else in the room? Come on up.
Sidney Greenlee.
Please come up to the podium.
Sidney Greenlee, Quays, 8A, Glenwood Ave. I'm urging you to vote no on this. The street is very bare of any shade trees, and removing this last tree would definitely be a harm to not only the aesthetics of the neighborhood, but also the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom, we have Dani.
Sorry, I'm kind of catching this in between things unfortunately tonight, but thanks for having, having this hearing. I am the manager of the project, and it was very, very constrained how National Grid was able to propose getting electricity into this site. We do recognize that although small and less than 10 years old and planted quite close to a utility pole within 15 feet, that the small tree that's there is the last that remains on, on the street and therefore holds some importance. I would propose that, you know, there are some good reasons not to go underground, which is really the next alternative that we have. And, you know, one of the main reasons that we would like it to stay the way it is is because if it goes underground and a box goes at the end of the street, a transformer box, there's a 10-foot setback requirement from that box, which would require us to move our sewer line a little bit, which wouldn't be the end of the world, except for the fact, it's not the end of the world in any case, but it does create the problem that it will create a jog in the sewer line for four of the units, which would create more sewer backups in the future for kind of no reason other than to save this tree, which is important. However, I will note that it is less than 12 years old, it was planted pretty close to a utility pole, and, you know, I'd like to offer that if the council is willing to consider it, that I could plant 10, 10- to 12-foot tree trees along the street on either side. I realize, speaking with Donna today, Lascalia, that being able to get them into the tree belt is constrained on that street because there's very little space between the street and the sidewalk, you know, the green space and the green belt between tree and sidewalk. And also on the other side, the utility lines are running there aeroly, so, you know, there's some constraints to getting many trees into the tree belt itself, but they could be planted in people's yards, in their front yards, very close to the street, although not in the city tree belt. And I'd be happy to plant them in people's front yards as well. And I think that that would, within five, seven years, it would get 10 trees on the street that are a similar size to the ones that are there. And it would have the additional benefit of allowing our development to, you know, those four units to not have sewer backups in the future that are unnecessary potentially. You know, I realize there's sometimes jogs and lines, but new construction is an opportunity to kind of get it right, you know? So that's what I have to offer, and if that's something the council would be willing to consider, I could put $10,000 in an escrow account so you can make your decision to allow it forward contingent upon money going into an escrow account that would be used for that purpose, where money couldn't leave the account without a second city official signature in addition to my own to approve, you know, funds to be expended for planting of up to 10 trees on the street. And of course, any remaining funds that aren't spent from that $10,000 could go into the city tree fund for general use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Come on up. Name and city or town.
Hi, my name is Erin Irvin. I live in Northampton at 20 Glenwood Avenue. All of this is happening right at the end of my driveway. So I just want to correct the record, the tree is more than 12 years old. I've been there 25 years and I've watched it grow. I don't know exactly when it sprouted itself, nobody planted it there, but I have watched it, and it's definitely been there more than 12 years. I also am moved to say that I've, I have had some conversation with Dani in terms of some of the possible workarounds here, which included at one point her offering to plant a tree for me at my sort of request. And when I specified I would like a 12-foot tree planted in a certain location, the response that I got from her was not positive or enthusiastic. So I appreciate that she's currently making an offer to remediate in some other way, but I'm a little frustrated by the whole experience, and I'm going to just take this moment of grandstanding, because I don't get very many of them, to say that I wish in this community, with all of the resources and privilege that we have, that we could somehow manage a more community development kind of conversation around the growth that we need to have. And ways that, I mean, the first time that I got to encounter Dani as an abutter to the property that she's building seven properties on was here, in this room, where we were already set up as being antagonists, and all I could do was object to whatever she was proposing, rather than somewhere in advance, a moment, a time, a place, to have a conversation about what will work in this community with these people that will give us all buy-in. And I know that there's no way to legislate that, but we have the social resources to develop it, and I would encourage us to find ways to do that and talk to each other in more respectful and supportive ways in general around all of the development issues in our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, we will answer those, oh, I see Counselor Clemmer, you go ahead.
Thank you. I have a question for Dani. Dani, have you checked with the 10 people that would have now a big tree in their front yard and if they're, would okay that?
Okay, well, I want to first answer the, we'll hold that question. And then I want to get, have Ken answer the question of what are the alternatives? We heard, I think, the property owner speak to one of them, which was underground.
Ken, I also clarify why we're here in the first place or how we got here to help explain.
Sure.
So it is a very tight location, a decent amount of power is required. We are required to find the most cost-effective way to serve to keep the rates down, to keep the infrastructure as tight as possible, and we deem this the most feasible plan that wouldn't delay things. Obviously, there are tree conflicts, which we weren't unaware of, that's why they're being brought up tonight. The alternates will all take more time to build, additional petitions. The most likely alternative is to go underground from the last pole, which is number four, and go in the street and have our civil contractor install conduit, encase it in concrete, and all the way to the property line, and then to a transformer pad around the corner on 39 Day Ave.
Okay, and is that the only alternative?
There was one other alternative mentioned, but it involved setting a pole on the opposite side of the street, directly across from where this one is being petitioned for, but that would involve setting an anchor on Erin's property at, I believe, 20. I could be incorrect. 20.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll take the question for Dani McCon, which was, have you spoken to the 10 owners who might have a tree?
Hi. I think this question was for me. I have not spoken with owners, but I'm sure there are some people who are willing to take trees in their front yards. And if there are not, I could put an additional tree at, next to my driveway, and we're going to be putting one to two on mine as well, so those two will be added to the street as it enters the back of the Day Avenue property from the end of Glenwood. I'm sure there's going to be some takers on the trees and whatever, whoever doesn't take, the rest will go into the tree fund.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Rothenberg.
Hi, Dani. Just to orient myself in weighing the pros and cons of moving forward with this, can you remind me what your plans are for those seven units in terms of square footage and rental price and whether any of them are going to be Airbnbs?
I don't think that's related to a.
I think it is relevant because it's about, it's about the community's interest in the properties, because we're going to be disrupting our community, so it's about the value it brings to us.
Well, the units are already built and they are going to be occupied. There are, there are four units that are less than 700 square feet, so we're experimenting with some smaller unit formats, one and a half bedroom, one and a half bathroom, that I, I hope will be able to roll out as starter homes in the future for sale. These ones will be for rent. And the larger units are 830 square feet, two bedroom, one and a half bath, so also quite small. And they will be rented.
Thank you.
Sorry, that wasn't a complete answer. The question about, the question also was about the price and whether they will be Airbnbs.
They won't be Airbnbs. They're going to be rented around the $2,500, $2,700 monthly.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Moulton. Counselor Moulton.
I have two questions. The first is for Mr. Kriegel.
If folks could go outside if they want to discuss?
The transformer that you mentioned as the likeliest alternative, is that in the same place that a neighbor specified earlier that she characterized as too crowded?
So no, that was an overhead transformer that would have been too close to her house. She was concerned about the noise and the proximity to her house. This would be a small pad mount transformer, slightly larger than this, that's on the ground, about this high, tucked around the corner on the property line. It's the only spot on the entire property that gives us our clearances that we can get to with a truck.
And that is, when you say the property, that's 39 Day Avenue?
Correct. If you're at the end of Glenwood, directly taking a left, it's 10 feet from the property line corner.
Yes. My second question is for Director Lascalia. Your reaction to the proposal that in exchange for the taking out of the oak tree that up to 10 trees be planted, not in the city tree belt on, on neighbor's property?
I think that that's a nice offer. There are some logistics associated with the offer that should be clarified. If we're operating outside of the tree belt, meaning outside of the public right-of-way, and planting trees on private property that are sort of a pass-through to the city, those are called setback plantings, and those do require an easement, a permanent easement from the. easement from the city, meaning the city owns that tree in perpetuity, but it is being hosted on the lawn of, of whatever the address would be. So that, that's actually, um, a registry of deeds filing. Um, the second thing is that there is mitigation, um, associated if, if we have to have a tree removed for some reason for a construction project in the public right-of-way, there is a tree mitigation fee per departmental regulation. So there is a cost associated with removing a tree depending upon the size of the tree. If, uh, Dani would like to make a donation that is in excess of that mitigation, or if the, the oak tree were to not be removed, um, and she just wants to give money to plant setback trees on people's lawns, that would actually be a gift to the city that would need to be accepted by this body.
Yeah, that's what I'm proposing, that it would be in addition to the about $10,000 in tree mitigation.
Are there any other questions?
No, thank you for the, the answer.
Any other input from members of the public? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Moulton and seconded by Counselor Maori. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
No.
Sorry, was that a no vote? Okay. Counselor Rothenberg, uh, voted against closing the public hearing. Uh, we will take that issue up later on in the agenda, which brings us to the last public hearing, a public hearing on 25.303, a national grid rise and petition to relocate pole on North Farms Road. This would relocate a jointly owned pole, pole 71 on North Farms Road approximately 11 feet east to the property line. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
To open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor, um, Labarge and seconded by Counselor Elkins. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, okay, your input.
Uh, so this pole is being relocated, um, due to the customer at 569 North Farms Road having an underground primary service up a very long driveway to a pad mount transformer. Um, their cable underground is currently owned by them and it is failing. In order to allow them to replace it, the pole needs to be in front of their property so that they don't trespass onto the neighbor's yard.
Thank you. Uh, any, well, we'll go ahead and take questions from counselors first. Counselor Maori.
Yeah, that was my question about the Curtis's who live on, uh, 569, if, because when you move the pole, you lose the camouflaging and it's closer to their driveway, but it sounds like it's not going to interfere with their driveway. And you've, you've talked, discussed this with them.
Correct, and it actually helps them out logistically. Uh, they would rather the tr- the trees stay hidden.
Yeah.
But moving it over allows them to build their new service while keeping the old one energized, minimizing any outages for them. Um, and legally, we can't leave it where it is because that line is crossing over. May have been a handshake agreement, but we can't find an easement for it.
So they are, they're in favor of this move?
Yes.
Okay. And do you, what do you do with the old pole? Do you just take it down completely?
Yes, we, uh, Verizon has to remove it because they're attached to it as well as all the other J O poles.
Okay. That was my big question because it, yeah, it's definitely much more visible in their driveway, but if it helps, help their electricity, I get that. Thank you.
Any other questions from counselors? Any members of the public wish to speak to this petition? Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Labarge and seconded by Counselor Elkins. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that is unanimous. Counselor Rothenberg absent.
Okay, unanimous.
All right, that closes out the public hearings. Thank you very much.
Counsel President, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, if there's interest in taking the Day Avenue, um, petition off of the consent agenda, uh, would you consider doing it before public comment? I ask only because, um, as you may have heard, we had a massive water main break today and Director LaScalia has basically been up since 1:00 AM maybe? Um, and I'd really like her to be able to go home.
Okay. Uh, counselors, are you amenable to moving that vote?
Is it just a, it, can we just like a now motion to remove that from the consent agenda and then leave that?
Yeah.
So move, to remove that from the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of removing, um, get the number. 25.302 from the consent agenda so that we may, uh, dis- discuss it now?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so, um, we can now take that up and, um...
Motion.
Is there?
Motion to remove.
No, we've already removed.
Oh, but, okay. To vote on it?
On the floor. Um, let's get it on the floor just for discussion. Uh, could I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Elkins and seconded by Counselor Labarge. Okay, this is now on the floor for discussion. Counselor Rothenberg.
Yeah, it's clear to me from what I have heard from this community that this project is too disruptive, and I think it's, as usual, coming out of our planning board, just benefiting runaway capitalism to the detriment of the neighborhood. And so, as much scrutiny as possible on this project, I think, is warranted. This will be a no vote for word three.
I can speak to it. Uh, I, uh, agree with the DPW's recommendation that, uh, because there are, are alternatives and were there to be alternatives such as alternative plantings, guaranteed alternative plantings set up, I would consider that, but as those are not set up and not in any way guaranteed, as they would all have to be on private property, um, for this petition, I, I plan to vote no. Counselor Moulton?
Yes, I, I also plan to vote no on a petition to, um, on a poll petition. It's not a vote against the project, but it's a vote, uh, to support the DPW's analysis. Uh, and, uh, and I, I, I think that there are reasonable alternatives to taking down this, needing to take down this tree.
Counselor Elkins.
I'll just briefly, I also plan to vote no for the reasons Counselor Moulton stated. Um, it is a little bit of a shame that the logistics of, of taking up the offer for the, um, for the trees couldn't be discussed and I, I was curious about it, at the thought of it, um, but it seemed like we weren't going to be able to un- understand if there was buy-in from the community for that, um, in, in the time that we have and also the, I had the quest, Donnie answered the question that I had, which was, who will own the trees and what does that mean? And it's, it's no small thing to, um, ask people to take e- city easements on their, on their private property, even if it's for something as lovely as a tree. So, um, I, I, I do appreciate, um, Dani's offer and, and thought about that, um, but I, I just, I don't think that we can make this work logistically, um, uh, uh, under these constraints, so I'll, I'll be a no vote and hope we have something come back before us that makes everybody a little, a little happier.
Any other comments? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait. Okay, let's do a roll call. Remember that a, a no vote is, uh, to deny the petition and a yes vote, an aye, is to approve the petition.
I thought you meant to...
The motion is to approve.
Oh, remove it or approve it?
We already approved.
Yeah, well, we'll do a roll call vote, just to be clear.
So just do a democracy.
Roll call, please.
All right. Counselor Dubs?
No.
Counselor Elkins?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Counselor Jarrett?
No.
Counselor Clemmer?
No.
Counselor Labarge?
No.
Counselor Maori?
No.
Counselor Moulton?
No.
Counselor Perry?
No.
And Counselor Rothenberg?
No.
Okay, that is unanimously denied. Thanks.
Wishing you rest.
Tonight. And that brings us to public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, you can sign up on the sheet at the podium. There should be a second one there. Um, if you're on Zoom, you use the raise hand feature. And, um, if you are having trouble on Zoom raising your virtual hand, you can turn on your video and physically raise your hand. You can also submit a written public comment. You can email it to citycouncil@northamptonma.gov. It will be sent to all counselors and will be part of the public record. I'm going to alternate between people in the room and people on Zoom. And before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to a maximum of two minutes. After two minutes, we will ask you to please finish your sentence. According to the council rules, we don't respond during public comment. It's your time to speak. And our rules also state that counselors and members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. Finally, you can speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda, and all comments are to be directed to the council. Uh, the first person is Nathan Chung.
Hi. Hi. My name is Nathan Chung, a Northampton resident. I work in government. I'm speaking here as a general member of the public. I'm going to some, share some reasons on why I've been coming here so often. The details are on my personal blog at cityontango.com/politics, with my email address to the bottom. I've been in the valley for almost 10 years, where I've observed a culture of entitlement, hypocrisy, and polarization. Words like progressivism, diversity, democracy, and free speech get thrown around until it gets inconvenient. If people from minority groups do not fit people's caricature of diversity, some people turn to belittling them and suppressing their ideas. In November and December, Counselor Rothenberg claimed that the state guidance she cast does not exist. I am holding the 2016 older guidance here. When I pointed it out, she found my personal email address and then sent me an email lecturing me, and on Facebook, she insulted me, insinuating that I have no independent thought. At the November 14th school committee public comment, she described how she used the queen and her villagers metaphor to help Tibetan monks understand northern politics. Tibet has mayors appointed by the Chinese Communist Party. Tibet does not politically savvy enough to form an exile government in India. I do not think they need a simplified metaphor. As a Korean-American, I'm familiar with this type of talking down to Asians. One of her supporters used profanity to describe me as a butt kisser for the mayor administration. She then wrote a newspaper column calling others to respect diversity. The two statements do not seem to match. Specific words and actions are much louder than any fancy labels. And just because we speak a different language or we come from other nations or our socioeconomic status is lower than you, it does not mean that we are less than you and our understanding is less than you. Thank you very much.
Next on Zoom is Suzanne. Your name and city or town, please.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Stilinger. I live, uh, on West Street in Northampton. Thank you so much. Uh, I am a teacher at New Village in Northampton as well. My daughter hates, one of my favorite pictures of hers, a photo of her sitting in my kitchen sink in the bubble bath eating waffle. She hasn't fit in that sink in my apartment for many years, but I didn't know there was no bathtub until we lived in. I wasn't really sure what our apartment would look like because I signed a lease, signed on scene through rent and all. It was kind of an adventure to discover this new place. I've been renting my whole adult, well, of my whole adult life, so it wasn't my first apartment search. And I wouldn't have felt comfortable signing a lease on an apartment I'd ever seen if I didn't feel like I could trust the owner. The owner is, and is Smith College, and I was finishing my undergraduate at the time. I trusted Smith, and that trust has been tested, but never more so than in the last two years, when my rent jumped each year at a rate four times higher than what Smith agreed to when it bought out of the West Street neighborhood. I graduated the same year that Smith celebrated raising $486 million via the Women of the World campaign that was, quote, "all about women, their education, their leadership, their history, and their future." So let me say this plainly, affordable housing is a feminist issue. It is a gender justice issue. It is an anti-racist issue. It is domestic violence issue and a family issue, and these are all social problems that I know we, the city of Northampton and the institutions that college included, care deeply about. My apartment is not affordable to Smith for actually. It is not affordable to a Northampton teacher. It is not affordable to a single parent. 60% of my teaching income goes toward keeping a roof over our heads. Why do I have to tell one of the greatest women's colleges in the world that this is happening in their literal backyard? And despite all of this, I still trust that Smith will do the right thing and I trust that the city of Northampton will too. To the members of the council and to my alma mater, I need your help. I'm not alone. So many renters here are barely keeping their heads above water, and the city would be poorer in countless ways without our contributions to its culture and its character. Voting in favor of this rent inflow resolution is a first step in the right direction. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We do have members with hearing accessibility concerns, so if you could hold your applause during people, other people's public comment and then have that at the end, that, or, you know, the end of each comment, just if you applaud during comment, it might be hard for people to hear. Um, next on Zoom is Jamie. Jamie, your name and city or town, please.
Hi, I'm Jamie Garen from Murphance. I live in the lumberyard where rents are also going well. Um, and I was here last week talking about my parking lot, not petition for more parking, but only because my parking lot here, where there's 42 spaces for 55 apartments, is being used as an example and why we, as why we need less parking when we have problems here constantly, all the time. So it is not a good example. It is a nightmare. Um, I see a common theme here of all this development happening in the community and the community not being involved or even knowing about it, and abutters fighting out about it or being ignored, and there's a real lack of communication here. Um, and that is a problem. And I also have a message from Maria and Nikos, who are here at the last meeting. They want to know why the mayor has not addressed her complaints yet. Nikos is a full-time... We're chilling reserve. He cannot get to the post office. They cannot get to City Hall. They cannot get to the library. There's broken sidewalks, broken pavement, poor lighting out at the bus stop. They can't get up the treacherous inclines. The little neighborhood behind the, the lumberyard, it's like impassable. They can't even get to the post office. She complained to the mayor. They took the whole story down and she has been totally ignored and she wants to know why the mayor is not responding. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I couldn't. Um, okay, next in the room is Nick Mottern.
Yes, oh, good evening. Uh, my name is Nick Mottern. I live at 16 Strong Avenue, Northampton. I'm a member of Demilitarized Western Massachusetts and Veterans for Peace. I'm here tonight to implore the mayor and city council of Northampton to immediately cut off the water and sewer service and police and fire protection for L3 Harris Technologies Plant at 50 Prince Street in Northampton. This is imperative because the L3 Northampton Plant is contributing to the profits of L3 Harris conglomerate that is every day criminally enabling the expanding slaughter and starvation of our sisters and brothers in Gaza and the West Bank. L3 is profiting from this genocide that is progressively killing 2 million people by selling parts for Israeli aircraft, bomb guidance systems, tanks, naval vessels, and surveillance. L3's revenue was $21.3 billion last year, up nearly 10% from 2023. This includes income from parts to build nuclear weapons that can incinerate the world like the periscopes that L3 makes in Northampton for submarines carrying nuclear missiles. Be clear on this, the L3 arms shipments to Israel are being made in violation of U.S. laws, and I've given a list of those laws to, to your clerk. Notably, the Leahy Law, which prohibits selling U.S. weapons to gross violators of human rights. For a moment, Mayor Chiara and members of the city council, picture yourselves as officials of a town that supplied water and sewer service to Auschwitz, the Nazi death camp that killed an estimated 1.1 million Jews. L3 Harris is, in my opinion, Northampton's Auschwitz. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a picture of a child among thousands of children who've been slaughtered and are continuing to be slaughtered every single day in Gaza. Thank you.
Next in the room is Laura.
Yeah, thank you. Hello, my name is Laura Belushi. I live in North Hampton on State Street. I am here, and you each have a copy of the proclamation that states the city of North-- that city of North Hampton is a nuclear ban day in 2023. It's just not one day, certainly. It states that the city of North Hampton, too, or will reduce and eventually eliminate any and all ties to the nuclear weapons industry. It follows on the bottom, "to encourage the residents of our community to be aware and work towards these important efforts to rid the world of nuclear weapons." However, there is a major problem in the city-- Oh, oh, I forgot the most important part. It is signed by Mayor Gina Louise Shiara on September 26, 2023. You each have a copy of this, and I have more copies for people to look over. The problem is, of course, L3 Harris, which, as Nick explained, is a major weapons producer in the United States and is killing children, is directly guilty of killing children in Gaza. That picture you saw of a boy whose legs were amputated, in fact, Gaza has the highest population of children with amputated limbs in the world, in the world! And Gaza is not a big area, is not very large. So nuclear free zone, North Hampton, it doesn't make sense. It can't be. L3 Harris produces-- works on optics for nuclear submarines.
That was time. If you could finish--
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Sarah. Your name and city or town, please.
Hi, this is Sarah Howard. I live in Florence in Ward 5. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed zoning ordinance change in regards to parking. I am enthusiastically in favor of it. The Unlocking Housing Production Commission, which was appointed by Governor Healey to study and report on how state and local laws, regulations, and practices could be revised so as to increase the supply of housing that is affordable across a wide range of incomes and available throughout a broad spectrum of neighborhood, recommended eliminating parking requirements statewide for any residential use. While this proposed change doesn't go as far as that, I think it's a great step in the right direction. It does not require this change for developers, but it does remove barriers for developers to continue to build housing, much needed housing, and infill, which is supported by data to improve, you know, work toward our climate goals. I know that people do struggle with the idea of less parking, but what we build for is-- the developers seem to be confident that if they build this sort of housing with only the parking requirements that they feel meets the needs and the goals of their development, that people will be interested in moving into those spaces. And so we'll get what we build for. We will get people who are okay with having less parking--
That was time. If you could finish your sentence.
Okay, so in the downtown areas. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Next in the room is Phil.
Hello, my name is Phil Wilson. I live in North Hampton in Ward 1. Before I start, I just want to say that I get confused and forget what I'm talking about, so I might-- and I also forgot my glasses, so I can't read what I wrote here. So anyways, I'm going to start off that there's about a gazillion towns and cities in the world, and the most terrible crimes being committed on this planet all originate in North Hampton. That may be shocking. At 50 Prince Street in North Hampton, we have a human trafficking operation run by Jeffrey Epstein-- Oh, wait a second. I got that wrong. I told you I get confused. It's actually way worse than human trafficking. We have a crystal meth lab at 50 Prince Street, killing hundreds of people with overdoses, and our politicians here don't do anything about it, and they hardly even speak out-- Oh, wait a second. Nope, not a crystal meth lab. Oh, boy, am I confused. We have at 50 Prince Street a slave labor concentration camp that's worked thousands of people to death, and our elected officials claim they can't be stopped because it's zoned for slave labor. And they also provide jobs and pay taxes. Oh, wait a second. You people wouldn't allow that. Okay, give me one more chance. At 50 Prince Street, there's a factory called L3 Harris that manufactures 1,600 components for the F-35 fighter used to commit horrendous war crimes in Israel that has taken 400,000 lives. 400,000 people have been murdered because of a business here in North Hampton that we do nothing about. Think about that for just a minute. I think I'm right here. I don't think I'm confused any longer. 1,000 lives.
Could you just finish your sentence? Thank you.
Sure. And, you know, I asked our mayor, what is she going to do about it? In the debate, she said, "There's nothing she can do." I don't accept that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Daniel.
Hello?
Hi, welcome. Your name and city or town, please.
Hi, I'm Dan Brindell. I'm from North Hampton in Ward 3. Right now, I'm actually in Mont Amber Lane. Somebody wants to come by, we can talk and hang out, talk about zoning. I'm here to talk about a giant rezoning thing that this entire council, I think, is trying to do tonight, which is to change the parking regulations in every residential zoning type, which would effectively upzone every single residential zone within the city without the normal oversight that we normally have to do to give a zoning exemption or to change zoning in a given community. These are regulations and requirements that a lot of people rely on, and what this council is trying to do is strip those protections and those things that people rely on from their residential neighborhoods. And they're doing it with very little input or oversight. They're trying to do it right now. President Jarrett, I know for a fact that you've been talking to people at the lumberyard who have been telling you about the issues that they've been having because they had improper parking built for that building. There was not enough parking built by design. That's something that this city is pursuing elsewhere and all over the city right now as a way of driving developers to build more high density, unregulated high density, which actually drives up market rates and doesn't make rents more affordable and makes them more expensive. I hope that people in this room understand that whatever anybody in this room is signing or saying that they're going to sign, what they're actually doing is they're pushing a deregulatory strategy that is leading to high density, that is unregulated, that has no affordability controls, which means that market rates are inflated now artificially without anything being built. That is the exclusive action of this council, of this mayor, this administration, and the contractors that they work for. And stripping these parking requirements across the board from other residential lots everywhere without, you know, any real input is-- I feel unacceptable. I just-- That's the nicest word I can say. It's unacceptable. And I hope that you guys-- I hope that you guys can bring in the public on these matters that will profoundly affect each and every one of their lives, especially those of you who will not even be on the council in a few months. Please listen to the public. The public doesn't want this. They want you to listen to them.
Next in person is Chris.
Good evening. My name is Chris Stratton. I live on Redford Drive, and I'm running to represent Ward 6 in City Council. The state has recently confirmed what parents have long been telling us, that we have been systematically failing our legal obligations to children on IEPs. We need to be clear that the money to achieve compliance must come from outside of the current school budget. We cannot expect the school committee to cut funding for the education of some children in order to fund that of others, nor can that money come from underfunding our essential city services like the DPW or Fire Department. Instead, we must consider each year's recurring budget before we tie up money in cash funding of capital projects. With the exception of getting critical seasonal street and sidewalk work out to bid early, items in the SIP should not be voted until their prioritization and fulfillment via cash or bond spending can be weighed against a full view of our recurring budget obligations to the people of North Hampton. My second topic concerns the premature proposal to reduce parking minimums. Reducing the role of cars in our lives is a worthy goal, and why I've taken advantage of this lovely summer evening to leave my car parked and bike here tonight. Before I bought in Ward 6, I rented in central North Hampton, and I did not own a car. But not owning a car only worked because unlike someone working a lower-wage job at difficult hours, I had the luxury of flexible work, and I didn't need to venture out in the cold or rain. It especially only worked because I did not have children to shuttle between activities and planned appointments or minor emergencies. I would ask those serving on this council to tell us, not about how a new sort of North Hampton resident does not desire to own a car. If you will be voting for this measure, I would ask you to tell the people of North Hampton what steps you have personally taken to determine that it is already an on-the-ground reality that a meaningful number of us are prepared not to use our cars less, but not to own cars at all. Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Michael. Your name and city or town, please.
Hi, Michael Stein, Ward 4 in North Hampton. Just wanted to make a brief comment about two issues that are somewhat related. First is I appreciate all the comments regarding L3 Harris. I think it's another one of these moments where the mirror of our values is held up to our actions, and we have to make traces of either live what we say are our values in the city or not, however limited those options are in front of us maybe. Secondly, I want to point out that the one thing I see consistently committed to the value of private development, especially in dense individual and sort of new urbanism in the city, and I find it very troubling. I was familiarizing myself with the 2021 Comprehensive North Hampton Sustainability Plan coming out next week, and I was shocked to see in this plan so many references to actually producing more parking, including for structures for parking on infill, including shared parking services and developing all sorts of parking, because the study that accompanies it and the dynamics that it mentions do not say that we don't need any parking and we can just build recklessly with no parking. So I really don't understand the folks who are telling us that this is in line with our funding goals or our sustainability goals, when our very plan says something contrary to that. I also want to highlight the rule of public transit and also shuttle service parking lots outside of the city center, for events, as I mentioned, none of which we're talking about. We're just talking about giving developers a free hand to extract as much value from their properties as possible with the least amount of amenities. They don't care if they burn our streets with more cars or inconvenience residents, as long as they get their rest. And I'm dismayed to hear my fellow citizens comment that what we've heard from them, and people, what are we doing, right? When did we all become Reaganomics folks when it comes to development priorities? This is already pushing that towards--
That was time. If you could finish your sentence.
And I urge you all not to make this change tonight without some actual studies beyond-- Let me get the 2021 more--
That was time. Thank you. Next in the room is Gorav.
Gorav Jishnani, Ward 6. "An effing disgrace." That's what my council member, Mary Ann Labarge, said in a recent council meeting. Surprisingly, she was not referring to our city government as a whole, but to Councilor Rothenberg, who wanted to allow Black women from the Reparations Commission to speak in a discussion about their commission. Civility and division have been constant talking points for many of you. If people tell you there are problems, we are bullying you. If we acknowledge that Mayor Shiara said there was a, quote, "fiscal crisis" last year, when there was actually $12 million of surplus coming down the pipe, it is labeled a personal attack. And if we state clear facts, like that our city underestimates revenue every year and then cuts the budget for schools accordingly, that the mayor has gutted school staffing and resources year after year, that our district routinely violates disabled students' rights, that our roads look like Swiss cheese for months, if we state facts like these, then we're told we're the problem. Even when the state investigates and declares that our schools are routinely violating multiple disability laws, as it did last month, I am called divisive for saying the truth out loud, and you all don't say much. Your hypocrisy is amazing. Will you talk about Councilor Labarge's lack of civility? Are you talking about a censure? Or will you ignore it because your talk about civility has just been a cheap way to hide the reckless, undemocratic approach to governance in North Hampton? Lest I seem ungrateful, I want to thank Councilors Elkins, Moulton, and Jarrett for serving this city by not running for reelection. I encourage Councilors Klemmer, Perry, and Labarge to either fight for what we need or do the same. Make way for candidates who will opt in, support our children, support our schools, and challenge the mayor's unilateral decision-making and constant stream of distortions. Candidates who will challenge-- I'll finish my sentence. Candidates who will challenge her four years of wrecking this city, leaving us with broken sidewalks, broken schools, and a broken democratic process. Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Janet.
Hi there, this is Janet Kyle from Leeds, Ward 7. I just have a brief comment, and this is mostly directed at Council President Jarrett. I would actually like to ask you to do some personal reflection about how you conduct these meetings. In the beginning of each meeting, you ask us all to conduct ourselves with civility, and yet you don't seem to ever call out Councilor Perry when he laughs at other councillors, particularly Councilor Rothenberg, and people who are making public comment. I have, as one person who's been in person making comments, witnessed Councilor Perry laughing in my face. Also, you allowed something to happen from Councilor Elkins, who was more concerned about changing the pronoun in meeting minutes from something else, rather than spending time talking about the reparations committee and allowing two of you to speak. And lastly, never discussing or publicly admonishing Councilor Labarge for calling Councilor Rothenberg an effing disgrace. Her behavior was an absolute disgrace. And for AI, in case you're going to blink this out, she said F-U-C-K-I-N-G. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next in the room is Meg. Welcome.
Hi, Meg Robbins, Ward 4. I spoke to you two weeks ago on the agenda item that got moved to this session on 25300 and ordinance reducing parking, which we've heard about tonight. This ordinance, while highly admirable in its climate consideration and a future without automobiles, does not reflect the needs of city residents at this point in-- automobiles, does not reflect the needs of city residents at this point in time and serves only as an incentive to developers. It moves the burden of on-street parking to residents who already compete for space with city workers in our small downtown side streets, and adds the additional conflict of car-owning residents on the same street with additional new builds. It privatizes public space by exhorting the availability of public parking, a minimum of $45 a month, which it imagines is convenient and affordable. It suggests that this change will result in builders happily creating green spaces, playgrounds, or other amenities, but doesn't mandate it. It tells us that it will result in half-million-dollar savings for builders and reduced tenant rents, but doesn't mandate it. It relies on residents using bicycles, a subjective outcome. It does not account for EV or e-bike charging, or a possible future where EV cars are the norm. It assumes that residents in affordable housing do not have cars. It is not based on any local data about Northampton, other than the vague, undated map showing Ward car ownership, and relies on the city's cited study, which is based on five towns near Boston. Governor Healey's report on locking housing, which gives rise to this, states that towns and cities must first have reliable and appropriate transit infrastructure before implementing any sweeping changes on parking ordinance amendments. Northampton doesn't. Sponsors Elkins and Jarrett tell us that they have consulted neighborhood groups, but don't say which. The sponsors have presented this to city committees, who unanimously approved it with little discussion, other than one which spent half an hour discussing bike sheds, and none discussing the lack of viable data or implementation feasibility. I ask you to consider why this ordinance change is being rushed through when we do not have the foundational transit infrastructure to support it, and council sponsors and committees have not done due diligence to more widely meet with, share, and listen to impacted constituents and represent their concerns. Can we just hold off? Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Claudia.
Hi, Claudia Leftgo on Forty Valley Street. I'm here to talk about a very topical, very relevant topic, given what Meg's just talked about and others about parking. The Montview Neighborhood Sidewalks and Street Working Group has joined the 2025 Week Without Driving campaign. This is a national initiative that organizes community leaders and residents to participate in a hands-on approach to understanding mobility, asking them to commit to not driving for a week or a day, whatever is more convenient. But what do people do? How do they manage without a car? Week Without Driving invites you, all of you and all of us, to answer that question, to experience that reality by putting ourselves in shoes, no pun intended, of those who cannot drive for whatever reason. Participation will help assess and document Northampton's transportation network, the sidewalks, the multi-use paths, and public transportation. It will provide on-the-ground data that we know is missing, that will be useful for city officials and residents who want to reduce driving and support and encourage walking with improved walkability infrastructure, especially in the downtown neighborhoods. We think it's particularly important that the mayor and her staff, and each of you, as well as the heads of the city departments and their staff, and members of the city's boards and commissions, all try to participate in whichever way possible. It's all of you, after all, who are creating the template, the environment you're asking us to inhabit, and this is a wonderful and important opportunity to test some of the planning theories about downtown and about mobility needs for those who live there. What are people going to do, as many people say, without their car, people who already live here? The statistic is one-third of people in America cannot drive for whatever reason. So you're setting up a situation that's very problematic. I invite you all to join the Week Without Driving, and for more information, you can go to the website. It's all one word, workweekwithoutdrivingnorthampton.org, and please sign up and experience life without a car. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the room is Helen.
Hello, city councilors. I'm Helen Tijerian, and I am a seventeen-year-old resident of Sunderland, whose school choice into Northampton School, where I am now a senior. While I do not speak on behalf of the Northampton Youth Commission, I am our interim co-chair, as well as the Chair of the Housing and Sustainability Subcommittee, so I work on issues like parking mandates in Northampton. I speak as someone who cannot afford to live in Northampton, and always had friends who've had to move debt due to unaffordable housing in Northampton. Councilors Alex Jarrett and Marissa Elkins have proposed an ordinance on off-street parking minimum reduction. This would undoubtedly benefit Northampton in many ways. So why do I say undoubtedly? Eliminating parking mandates altogether has proven its efficacy across the United States in multiple cities and even an entire state, Oregon. Studies such as those by the Sightline Institute provide concrete evidence. In recent years, Oregon's population has boomed. Between 2010 and 2020, it increased by over 400,000 people. Housing increased by 150,000 people. This problem kickstarted a series of housing and parking reforms that began in 2019. Three years later, in 2022, Oregon banned parking minimums in a historic and unanimous vote. This was the largest rollback to parking minimums and mandates in U.S. history. The state government reasoned that parking is, quote, "overbuilt," adding unnecessary costs while making areas less walkable. A better approach is to let the free market provide parking where there is demand. This rollback generated an increase in monthly housing permits for two-to-four-unit buildings in Oregon, as well as countless other benefits. There is no parking maximum, and developers can build as needed. Behind my workplace, which is below housing, there's an empty lot instead of more housing due to parking minimums. The ordinance that will be discussed today will not eliminate parking mandates. They will only reduce them. It encourages bicycle parking by removing the open-space deterrent. I believe this to be an important first step in creating incremental change that will have positive overarching results in Northampton. If numerous other cities and even a state have seen that reducing and even eliminating parking minimums benefited them on numerous fronts, why should Northampton do the same, starting with this ordinance? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is, it begins with a U, U R Z A? Not sure. Menzel. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. No, that's okay, my handwriting's hard to read. My name is Eliza Menzel. I'm a renter on Con Street in Northampton and a paralegal at a tenants' rights law firm in Springfield. I'm here to strongly encourage you to vote in favor of rent stabilization today. On a daily basis, at my job working with low- and medium-income tenants, I hear from people who are riddled with anxiety about their rent going up. I listen to people speak about how utterly destabilizing it is to not know whether you'll be able to pay the rent when and if it increases, especially for those already struggling to make ends meet. The incredible burden of this anxiety often becomes tangible. Loss of sleep and the onset of new or exacerbation of pre-existing mental and physical illnesses, to the point of desperation, burnout, and all-encompassing dread for both adults and children are all too common. I'm speaking broadly because I've heard it literally hundreds of times in the last year and a half of working at this job, and this cannot be the norm. You should not have to be affluent to live and work here, and Northampton, as a place that touts itself as a progressive haven for creatives, queer people, and families, cannot continue to allow powerful forces like Smith College and Rent NoHo to skyrocket rents in such a way that pushes these pillars of our community out. Rent stabilization will alleviate many of these burdens and allow for a more supported community. It's in the name. Rent stabilization will help families develop long-term stability, making housing sustainable, and giving people the crucial knowledge of when and how much their rent will increase by, allowing them to plan effectively instead of being blindsided by surprising and exorbitant increases. I have personally been lucky to rent from a landlord who has not increased the comparatively reasonable rent in two years, making it possible for me and my partner to keep living there on two multi-job incomes. I'm grateful for this and consider myself privileged, but the security that comes with knowing that you and your family have a stable, consistent place to live should not be a privilege. I hope that you will do the right thing today and vote in favor of the rent control resolution. This is a crucial step in making Northampton a place where stable housing is a given and where the vibrant community we love is free to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sal.
Oh, Philip. I'm gonna do, can I do this? Is that okay? Oh, how's this sound? Does it work? Okay, great. Yeah. Cool. Hello, everyone. My, it's also weird, I feel like I want to say, talk to them, too. My name is Sal, and I'm a renter off of State Street. Before I read what I wanted to say, I also just wanted to say that I agree with cutting off the power and water to L three Harris. So many people every day were always wondering, like, what can we do? Like, this is something that we can do, right? To stop genocide from happening. So let's all just do the right thing, please. And also came here to say that I'm a graduate student at Smith, and I live in an attic room and share a kitchen and bathroom with four other people, and I struggle to pay my rent as I juggle school and part-time jobs. I'm speaking today in support of the resolution backing rent stabilization as a meaningful step towards making Northampton in the Valley a place where students, workers, elderly and disabled people can afford to live without spending every waking moment terrified of rent increases, fearful of asking landlords to fix maintenance issues, and foregoing groceries or medication in order to keep a roof over their heads. But this resolution is not enough. The only reason this resolution is being read and voted on today is due to the work of the West Street Neighborhood, who, with their supporters, many of who are here today, have been organizing because of huge rent spikes by Smith College, the largest landowner in Northampton. Smith, a school I and many others are taking out massive loans to attend, is making it impossible for people to live in Smith-owned properties and the city as a whole. Our city legislators need to do something about this and other money-hungry corporations like Rent NoHo, and we're going to keep organizing, speaking up, rallying in the streets, sidewalks, the sidewalks, until we see tangible results. Thank you, city council members, for your time, and please vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nancy.
Hi, everyone. My name's Nancy Dorian. I live in East Hampton, and I recently got a $400 rent increase in February, one go. And this was out-of-state buyers from Connecticut, they're never there, and they're investing, and they think it's okay to raise someone's rent $400 a month. I'm an artist. I barely make it already, and now I'm paying another $400. And I think this is happening here in Northampton as well. It's been a big problem. I used to live in Northampton, can't afford that anymore. I went to East Hampton thinking it's more affordable, and now that's getting gentrified. And I think one of the main problems is that governments are not stopping these out-of-state LLCs. They're only looking at us as dollar signs. They are not looking at us as people with any kind of needs. So, and where I live, they have doubled the rent from when I first was living there. Now they're advertising for double of what I was paying, and it hasn't even been seven months. It's like, to me, that is total greed of these people that don't respond to the things that we need fixed. They never even see how it's falling apart because of the management companies they're using, and they just, you know, are collecting our checks. It's not okay. Elderly people live there, disabled people live there, creatives live here. This is a place where we made this place great, and we can't live here anymore. Something needs to be done, and I really am glad that you are considering this resolution and following East Hampton and passing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Yakov.
Hi, everyone. My name is Yakov Kronrod. I'm a resident of Northampton, Ward Four. I also happen to be running for city council at large. I'm here mostly to support a ton of amazing people who came out from the West Street Northampton Tenants Union, organized a ton of people to come out and speak up about the rent and affordable housing issue in Northampton. I just want to say thank you to all the organizers and encourage them. As many of you probably know the quote Margaret Mead once said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has, and I commend everyone for working on this. Housing is a human right. I think that's important to say. Everyone deserves a safe, affordable place to live and a reliable place to live, and I think the city could do more to support tenants and people living in the community. We talked that, you know, candidate forums, about a ton of those. I'm not going to talk about formal policy, but I will say that there are a few very important things to do. One is, of course, yes, pass the resolution to allow towns to stabilize rents. I think that's very important, and I think towns deserve the right to do what's right for the people in their communities. But I think Northampton can actually do a lot more. It's a systemic issue. It is an issue of greed. I think the city needs to work with Smith, which is one of the largest private landlords, to set a good example and help Smith do right by its community. And I think we need to do a better job reminding the landlords in our community that they could do better. I am a landlord. I have reduced rents more than I've raised them, and I partner with my tenants, and if they can't make rent, then they don't pay rent that month. If you have a mortgage on a property as a landlord, it does not go up, and someone else is buying your house for you. You need to keep that in mind, and if you need, as a landlord, need to spend money to fix it, make it better, and help them stay there, that's your responsibility. And I think we, as a community, as a city, as just people who care, need to remind landlords of that, starting with the LLC landlords, with Smith, with Rent NoHo, and with other large corporations that are just benefiting on the backs of--
That's time, if you could finish your sentence.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Joel.
Hi, I'm Joel Feldman. I live in Ward Four. I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago. I first want to thank the mayor, Councillor Jarrett, Councillor Klemmer for putting this forward. And I encourage everyone to read all these whereas clauses, which are super boring, but there's an amazing amount of information here, including 46% of households in Northampton qualify for affordable housing programs. Forty-six percent. Fifty-three percent pay more than 30% of their income for rent, and 27% pay more than 50% of their income for rent. This is a deep and pervasive problem that nobody should be ignoring anymore. Housing, I know, has bubbled up to the top of the agenda. I appreciate that. I know you all voted for this last time. I hope you're going to vote for it again. I also want to say that sometimes it's painted as the out-of-state landlords who are doing it, and the lovely in-city people are doing a great job as landlords, and probably a lot of them are, but I am now seeing local landlords piggybacking on these rent increases. So we have a new group that's organizing, and there are five tenant groups organizing in Hampshire County right now. East Hampton just saw a 20% to 30% increase in the new group, and it's a local landlord who owns like 150 apartments. Smith is a local landlord. This is easily solvable for Smith. Just abide by the agreement you made a bunch of years ago. There's nobody who's forcing Smith to do 10%, 15%, 20% rent increases. Just do the 25 bucks a month that you said you'd do years ago, that you managed to do for years. Don't piggyback off these people that are raising rents for everybody in the city. Please support this resolution, and if the legislature's not going to pass this, we just got certified by the Attorney General to go to the ballot. We're going to go to the ballot for rent control, so it's going to happen. Join the train. Thanks.
Next is Anna. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Anna Benher. I live in Ward Three, and I'm a renter. I asked the city council to support R 25 through 09, a resolution supportive of an act enabling cities and towns to stabilize rents and protect tenants. I work at a local elder services agency, and I've seen the way that these rental prices have taken a huge toll on the ability for elders to live in Northampton. I've met folks who have lived in this town for the past 50-plus years, who are living in unsafe housing and cannot leave because they are fixed income and can't afford the skyrocketing rent prices in this town. Just nearby in Hadley, an apartment building for low-income elders just implemented a 25% rent increase, and there's nothing tenants can do to legally protect themselves because of the ban on rent stabilization in Massachusetts. Smith College and other major landlords in this town have the freedom to decide that market rate is whatever they want it to be without making any repairs. I myself have faced the issue of possibly leaving Northampton because local landlords have chosen to set exorbitant rent prices, like $2,700 for a small two-bedroom, and I simply can't afford that. We need legislation like the Rent Stabilization Act to make this community accessible to all. I would love to continue living in Northampton alongside my neighbors and community, and encourage the city council to commit to protecting its renters. Who make up-- who make up half of this town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Kayla.
My name is Kayla Goldstein. I live on South Street in Ward 4. I'm speaking in favor of the resolution in support of rent stabilization. I'm an early childhood educator. I live and work in Ward 4, and I'm an employee of Smith College. I enjoy living walking distance from where I work, caring for the children of Smith faculty and Northampton-area families. My income as a teacher and Smith employee is not enough to afford the services we ourselves provide. And living here is not an option for so many care workers like myself. Smith makes that so by driving up rents in this town. My landlord has tried to not renew my lease so they can renovate, hike up the rent, and profit more from our home. My roommate and I successfully fought this so far, but if they were to raise the rent to push us out, I have very little confidence I would be able to find somewhere else in Northampton. Smith has a responsibility to live up to their proclaimed commitment to justice and push Northampton towards stable rents and secure affordable housing by setting that precedent themselves. Rent stabilization would give me peace of mind that I can stay in the community I serve and have made a home in. Also, my friend Nina Haddad in Ward 3 could not be here but wrote the following for me to read tonight. She writes, "I have been living in the same apartment for four years. My landlord just sold the building to a developer. They stopped our trash service while telling us it's coming. They haven't responded to service requests, then gave us the options of 30 days to quit or sign a year lease with an $800 increase, with a total of $2,000 per month. I'm on a month-to-month lease. Now I have 30 days to find something new that's affordable and move. This is my home. I wanted to stay here and raise a family here, and I won't be able to. Our town is being taken over by developers and greed. I grieve for it."
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Mackaborsky. Your name and city or town, please. I see you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Okay, we will-- Yep, there we go.
Okay. Sorry about that. Melissa Mackaborsky, I live in Northampton. I'm talking to everyone in the room here tonight. And what I want to say is, we have this preliminary election coming up on September 16th. We are the majority, the people who want change. If every single person in this room gets out there to the polls, brings a friend, brings a family member, ask five or 10 people even to go to the polls with you, we will win this, and we will start having change in this city. There are several people running this year that will do absolutely nothing to change how things are. But on the flip side, there are plenty of people running who will, and will change some of the comments in the public comment tonight. Look at the facts, look at voting records, watch the voting records tonight and see who votes which way, who votes for the people and who votes for the developers. There are so many issues going on right now and people not listening to people with lived experience, but we can absolutely change this. This is our year. Everybody, please, get out and vote, September 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the room is Maya.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Maya Penuel. I'm a renter at 126 King Street, a senior at Smith, and a member of the Northampton community who is incredibly alarmed by the rent hikes and the cost of housing here. As such, I'm speaking in support of Resolution R25309 for stabilized rents. My roommate's partner and I have only been able to afford to live in Northampton because we live four people to a two-bedroom. And even when we were trying to find apartments, we constantly faced landlords who wanted to charge us $200 to $500 more per month because there were four of us. Our fellow tenants in Northampton have, through their many kindnesses, made it so that we paid little to nothing for pots, pans, mixing bowls, chairs, desks, lamps, and even the items filling our pantry as we moved into our apartment. Despite the precarity that many tenants here face because they have been forced into it by Smith, Rent NoHo, and other large landlords here, we have still found our neighbors to be far more generous than the landlords who are unjustly hiking up rents. Northampton tenants deserve dignity and justice in stabilized housing prices because they're workers, community members, and generous neighbors who sustain this town. Please vote in favor of Resolution R25309. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Don.
We'll just do a general call.
Yeah, feel free. I'm Don Darnell from Northampton. Just speaking in favor of 25300, the zoning ordinance change regarding parking, minimum parking requirements. I consider this a very mild-mannered change, a modest change, not nearly what is proposed in many other communities for loosening the required minimum parking for new developments. 3,000 cities in the United States have followed this sort of approach, including smaller communities that are around our side, Seabrook, Massachusetts, Dover, Hudson, New York, Thompson, Connecticut, Hanover, Burlington. I know, I mentioned before my own, where I've lived in Edmonton, Alberta, completely eliminated recommended minimum parking requirements. Big portions of Calgary, Alberta, where I also lived, Portland, Oregon, and I've learned the whole state of Oregon waiving these recommended minimums. And what I have seen in those communities where those changes have been made is the theory playing out, that is, that reducing this restriction on development enables more housing development. It enables new homes to be developed that bring a greater population into a walkable circle within the city, which encourages economic activity in the town. It brings Main Street, makes it more vibrant, and produces the tax basis base, which allows us to pay for, as a community, amenities that we like, like parks and schools and things that we care about. I want to point out the example of a smaller town, a little bit smaller than Northampton, a long way from here. I mention it because I just know about it. I've spent time there. Sandpoint, Idaho. It's kind of an artsy community-- Oh, I've gone way too--
If you could finish your sentence.
Yeah. So just an example of a town that really saved a lot of local amenities and local businesses to the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ben.
Hello, councilors. I'm Benjamin Spencer. I live here in Northampton. I'm also a candidate for Councilor-at-Large in the upcoming election. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the reduction of off-street parking minimums in the city. And I think this is something that makes a lot of sense. It's an incremental change. I think it's going to lead to some incremental change. There's a lot of talk about big developers coming in. My understanding is this is more about if you're someone who owns a home and is interested in having an accessory dwelling unit in your home, so maybe extended family could live there, or it could be a source of income, this would make that more possible, especially in the neighborhoods where things are a little tighter, because you wouldn't be required to have as much parking as the current ordinances require. And that only provides more options. I think that this is a way to give people more options to create more housing, especially in the areas where we need housing, where it's walkable to our downtowns. I can give an example. I live close to Laurel Street. Valley CDC just completed a project there. And there are 20 units. And initially, there was going to be fewer than 20 parking spaces. Some neighborhood concerns, Valley CDC listened. There's 20 spaces for 20 units. Some of these are two-bedroom, three-bedroom units. I have yet to see that parking lot full. I have not seen that parking lot full. It is fully occupied. And so when Valley CDC tells us that, in fact, there isn't, they haven't seen that need, there's proof on Laurel Street right now. And I would argue that we do have an excellent public transportation system here in the valley. It's the Pioneer Valley Transportation Association, and people use it, and it's got a lot of value. So many people live in our community, and--
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Din.
Yeah.
Your name and city or town, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer James, and I live in Northampton. I'd like to speak to the parking change that you guys are going to vote for tonight. As a cyclical commuter in the city, on and off for over 37 years, and probably the only parent of a kid who cycles to Northampton High School all year long, I think that there's two problems right now with the urge to create less parking. I think the first problem is that our city is so far behind other cities who are creating these kinds of limits to parking in terms of the cycling infrastructure being safe for a good mix of cyclists, that we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. Our infrastructure right now for cyclists isn't built to help weaker cyclists, senior citizens, or other people that aren't strong riders to safely commute to places like shopping or schools or downtown currently, unless you're on one of the bike trails. And when you're not connected to one of the bike trails, you're typically on a lane that is out of date because it's unbuffered. It's really putting you in a place between parked cars and moving traffic, and where you can be dorked or hit by a car. My son typically commutes up Elm Street every day, four seasons a year. And there's usually debris in lanes. There's traffic that's moving in the winter into his lane. And there are people who aren't accustomed to cyclists exiting their cars. I think that our city can really grow and change and create less parking. But I think doing that before we really have the infrastructure for everyone to safely cycle is kind of putting things ahead of where we are realistically right now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I have one more thing.
That was time.
Oh, I believe that Councilor Jarrett supercues himself because carless citizens are not going to be able to take their own trash to the dump. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Ace.
Ace Taylor, Ward 3, one of the many folks running for city office here today. I wanted to speak on two things. First, for rent stabilization, four. I think everyone seated in front of me is four. Everyone seated behind me is four. And I'm so glad so many people could come out in support of it. What comes with this is the need to concern ourselves with maintaining existing rental spaces. The number of folks that I've talked to who are afraid to report problems in fear of a rent hike or a non-renewal has gotten to more than 20 at this point. This is going to be exacerbated by putting caps on rents. So we do need to create more infrastructure to find ways of allowing renters to report problems and having those reports be followed up on by the Board of Health. Also related to this is the rentable places that we have in the city need to be usable by renters. The portion of the proposed change tonight that reduces parking requirements is going to do the opposite of that for the aforementioned reasons of public transit isn't where it needs to be to support. Biking is great, and I think that portion should continue forward, requiring more spaces to park bikes. But my coworker in Florence can't pick up shifts on Sundays or evenings because there is not a bus transit that goes from downtown Northampton to Florence at the times when she would have to work. She's lucky enough to have a car. She's lucky enough to have space to have a car. If she only had one space, well, her or her partner would have to choose who goes to work that day, which I think is, you know, not what we want. Given that market-rate apartments would require $60 a year to afford without rent burdensome, we need to do better. And I know we're going to keep working towards that. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing none, thank you all. And we will take a short recess. We'll come back at 8:25. Welcome back to the Northampton City Council. We have just finished public comment and we're on to announcements from councilors and the mayor. Are there any announcements? Council Rothenberg.
I just wanted to expand a little bit and clarify what Claudia Lefkoe was talking about in her public comment. That's Ward Three Initiative from the Montview Neighborhood, and their group is called the Sidewalks and Streets Working Group, and their goal is to create safer, more accessible streets. She is telling you about a week without walking, I mean, a week without driving, sorry, that starts on the 29th of September, and what she's asking you to do is to basically report back the challenges that you have with that so that we can make the city more, more easy to use for people who are not in their cars. And I think even if you're able to participate in that in the first place, you're already sort of maybe at an advantage where like you've got the opportunity to be able to try to live your life without your car. So I would suggest that if you are in the camp of people who can't even do that, that you just know, I can't do this week without a car, I think it's still worth signing up and sending that to her and letting her know about that. So it's sort of like the whole purpose is to talk about barriers to being able to get around without a car. So you can sign up on their website, which is weekwithoutdrivingnorthampton.com, and hopefully she will collect that data and bring it back to, I'm sure she'll bring it back to me as a counselor, and we can work on improving the infrastructure of Northampton. Thanks.
Thank you. I also wanted to speak about the Week Without Driving. It's weekwithoutdrivingnorthampton.org, not .com, and there's also a national website. This is not just a local initiative, but, but a national one, and that website is weekwithoutdriving.org. So thank you, Council Rothenberg. Also, a reminder that due to Yom Kippur, our first council meeting in October has been moved to Tuesday, September 30th. And Council Moulton, would you like to announce city services?
I would, Councilor. President Jarrett, thanks for reading my mind. The Committee on City Services will hold a public hearing at 5:00 PM Monday, September 8th, next Monday, in the council chambers here on the petition to accept the layout of Main Street and a number of other connecting streets.
Thank you. Are there other announcements? Council Cramer.
Thank you. Just a reminder that early voting starts on the 6th next week, or this weekend, Saturday, and Wards 1, 3, 5 will be on, be voted on for council, and then the, the city council at large will be voted, and the mayor. So don't forget to get out and vote, and, and the actual election day is on the 16th.
Thank you. Mayor Shera.
Good evening, councilors. I just want to let everyone know that this is the last weekend of Summer on Strong. The season is wrapping up on September 9th. So tonight through Sunday is the last evenings of music for Summer on Strong, and I just want to thank our partners, the fabulous businesses that are on Strong Avenue, the sponsors, all of the workers. It's been a really great year, and thank everyone for going down and supporting it, and everyone who makes this really sort of magical experience happen in that space. It's, it's a lot of additional work for the businesses there, and so I just really want to thank them. And I hope that they have a, a little bit of downtime, not too much downtime, we want them to be busy, but that, you know, we appreciate all the extra effort that they put in, in the summer to make this happen. It's hard to do inside and outside at the same time in that, in the way that they do, and so I just want to thank them and hope that they get a little bit of respite. And the Taste of Northampton, so the Taste of Northampton is coming back. It's on Saturday, September 13th. That's from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Saturday, and also it's on Sunday. So it has been so successful since we brought it back in 2022 that this year it is now going to be two days, and it's back in its old location, if you can remember, way back over 20 years ago, before it had its long hiatus, and that's in the Armory Street parking lot. So two days, Saturday and Sunday, 13th and 14th. Over 30 restaurants that are participating and vendors, food and beverages that run the gamut and sample all of Northampton's fabulous food and drinks. And huge thanks to the city's economic development team and Arts and Culture Department, along with the DNA, and in collaboration with the Parlour Room Collective. All of them have worked together to curate a musical lineup on both of those days. So there's all different types of music on both of those days, and it's going to be a really fabulous time. And later on in the agenda, you, there's a vote to suspend parking fees on that Saturday, September 13th. So assuming that that gets passed, then Saturday, there will be no parking fees collected, so free parking on Saturday, and of course, parking's always free on Sunday. So if that passes, then it's free parking all weekend. Come on down and enjoy the taste. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor, I have a question. You know, the Summer on Strong is so wonderful. Is there a desire at all to, to extend it further from people you hear, you know, from businesses and such? Because I see how popular it is.
Do you mean extend it space-wise or time-wise?
Time-wise.
So it's actually the businesses, it's their choice to end it sort of earlier in the season.
I see.
Right after, they've requested to end it right after Labor Day, because it's, you know, been a busy summer, and students come back, and it's, as I said, it's a lot of work for them to do, and so they like go all out during the summer, and then at this point, they're ready to, to wind it down. So that's at their request.
Any other announcements?
Thank you.
Council Perry.
Yeah. In kind of the honor of Summer on Strong, I think that this weekend is going to be, or coming up is the Last Salsa in the Park, which has been a new addition to our outdoor activities. It's not just salsa, there's bachata and merengue and all sorts of other great rhythms there. It's a good, family-friendly event, activating a unique space in our city. Go out and enjoy. All right, it's 9:06, as September 6th is the last one, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Okay, thanks for the announcements. We've moved to the consent agenda. I'm going to read the items on the consent agenda, and if there are any requests for removals, we can remove and talk about them. The minutes of July 10th, 2025, to approve 25.278, the National Grid Verizon poll petition for Michaelman Avenue. To approve 25.279, the National Grid petition to install 1,700 feet of underground conduit on Whittier Street. To approve 25.303, the National Grid Verizon petition to relocate pole on North Farms Road. And 25.311, an order to set spending limit for charging station electricity program revolving fund, we already removed and voted on, 25.302. Any removals? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion for.
Second.
Motion made by Council LaBarge and seconded by Councilor Elkins. Any discuss, or there's no discussion on the consent agenda, and because there's a financial order in here, we need to do a roll call vote on approval.
Okay. Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Cramer.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayori.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yes.
Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes.
And Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. It brings us to orders. 25.306, the warrant for the November 4th, 2025 biennial municipal election. This is in second reading. We introduced it and discussed it on August 21st, and Councilor Mayori and I have put an amendment on the agenda to this, and I can briefly describe it. Oh, thank you, Laura, for screen sharing it as well. So it is, so the Board of Registars citing costs recommended only five early voting days for the general election. In 2023, we did 10 weekdays and two weekend days, and so this amendment matches that. I would note that this is also the state requirement for state elections, and in terms of the cost, we talked about this last time, it's $508.53 per day. This money is already in the city clerk's budget, so the total cost of expansion would be $3,560. Councilor Mayori and I feel that the cost is worth it to encourage more people to vote. So the dates of our proposed amendment, the original dates were Monday through Friday, October 27th to October 31st, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. We're proposing to add Saturday, October 18th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Monday through Friday, October 20th through October 24th, from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, and Saturday, October 25th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And that 5:00 PM time, that's the last day to register to vote for the election, and so the city clerk's already going to be in the office. They, it's, it's not going to cost anymore to add those extra hours. Councilor Mayori, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just that, that, that point that she was going to be there anyway, and might as well let people have that voting time as well.
Councilor Elkins.
Um, I just, have we moved on to discussion yet, or am I jumping the gun?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I just, the only thing I wanted to say is I was a little, I'm a little disappointed that we have this amendment in front of us, not because I'm not going to vote for it, because obviously I am, but, you know, Clerk Powers was suggesting that, that exactly what we are, I suspect, going to pass tonight in terms of voting, and it was Board of Registars who, you know, took a concern about, and we always need to be mindful of money spent, but, you know, Clerk Powers talked about how it was already sort of built into her budget, that she didn't see a cost concern, and so I'm just a little, you know, we can be mindful, and also the, I, I'm a little confused as to why, when there wasn't a suggestion that it wasn't already sort of within the budgets and our resources, that they would take upon it, there would be any effort anywhere in the city to reduce the number of voting days, except for, but the very maximum that we have. So I'll be happy to vote this tonight, and certainly appreciate the Board of Registars' service and their consideration and their thoughtfulness of that, but, you know, I think we are wise to err on the side of more days of voting, not, not less, so.
Thank you. Council Moulton.
Yes, and just to piggyback on that, I believe that, given the strong interest in this year's municipal election, that maximizing the availability of voting early, voting by mail, having all those options would outweigh any, and, and the, the cost of $508 a day is very modest, in my, in my view. So maximizing voting opportunities, to me, outweighs a cost concern.
Any other comments? I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Either without the amendment.
With the amendments.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Council Perry and seconded by Councilor Elkins. Any further discussion? Laura, does this require a roll call?
It's not a financial order, technically.
Okay. Well, let's just do a roll call, just to be sure. So roll call, please, of the warrant for the November 4th election as amended.
Okay. Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor Cramer.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayori.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yes.
Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Councilor Dobbs.
Yes.
And Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We move to 25.308, an order to suspend parking fees on certain days, and this comes from the mayor's office. And this comes from the mayor's office. Would, anything further? I know we discussed this last time. Anything further you'd like to add? Are there any questions from councilors? I'd entertain.
I'll move to approve this as well.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Perry, and seconded by Councilor Dubs. Any discussion? A roll call, please, unapproved.
Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
Councilor La Barge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayori.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yes.
Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Councilor Dubs.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
And Councilor Jarrett.
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. I see that there are still some folks here from the, speaking about, or who spoke about the rent stabilization resolution, so with the council's permission, I would propose to jump to that. Okay. So 25.309, a resolution in support of an act enabling cities and towns to stabilize rents and protect tenants. We read the resolution last time, and the sponsors spoke to it, but I'll first turn to sponsors. Is there anything you'd like to add? Mayor Shara.
Thanks. Bless you. Thanks again to the co-sponsors for working on this and for including me, and I just want to thank everyone who came today and spoke, and special appreciation to the West Street Tenants Group for their organizing and for meeting with me, and I absolutely agree with them that rent should be affordable, and any increases should be reasonable, and that properties need to be well-maintained, and renters can't fear retaliation for asking for maintenance. So, you know, we're going to be talking about housing a bit tonight. Since the last council meeting, I had the opportunity to discuss escalating housing costs in a few different venues, but including at a roundtable discussion with Senator Elizabeth Warren, who has a federal bill on housing in a very rare moment of bipartisan agreement on anything, but in this case, that the federal government has an important role to play in creating housing and bringing down costs. And you know that that collaboration is only happening because all states, red and blue, are feeling the effects of the housing crisis, and about one-third of those residents in those states are renters nationwide. But of course, this, you know, resolution is about here in Northampton and supporting this legislation, or as we heard from Joel Feldman tonight, ballot initiative if needed, which allows us and other cities and towns to enact rent stabilization locally, and add those very badly needed guardrails on rental increases, and also provide some eviction protections. So again, thank you to my co-sponsors, and thank you to everyone who came out tonight and spoke on this, and I look forward to your vote.
Thank you. Councilor Mayori? Would you like to add anything?
Oh, um.
I'm sorry.
Councilor Clemmer. For some reason, I just.
They always get us mixed up. You're like twins. I want to thank the West Street Group, too, for bringing this issue to my attention, and the mayor and Council Jarrett for co-sponsoring this with me. And I think it's so important, you know, the stories we heard tonight and other nights from people that just, you can't plan your life if you don't know how much your rent is going to go up, or when it's going to go up, and, you know, living in a place that isn't taken care of. The landlords need to take care of the tenants more, and Smith and all the other landlords in town that are just jacking up the rent. I'm also, and I have supported this term, and if I am lucky enough to be elected next term, I'll continue to support any kind of housing being built, because supply and demand, the more housing we have, the less opportunity it is for people to just stack up their rents, because there'll be more places for people to live. And Senator Warren spoke to that, too, at the meeting with the mayor. And we've built almost 300 units the last couple of years, or they're in the process of being built. So I'm really glad that we're passing this resolution tonight, and I'll do what I can to continue fighting and trying to keep rents under control and reasonable.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, when East Hampton passed this, I was like, we should do that, we should do that. And then, thanks to the tenant organizers for pushing us and helping us, and here we are. And, you know, the data and the stories show that it's really hard to stay here if your rent and your income isn't high. And we lay out in the resolution how many renters are housing cost burden, thanks to Joel for pulling out those important statistics. And I said last time, you know, the goal isn't to prevent people from making a living, building, or taking care of properties and renting them. The goal is to, it's to establish that when a tenant moves in, they have a reasonable expectation of being able to stay there and afford it, and not being evicted unless there's a just cause. And a reminder, right, it's a municipal opt-in statute, so cities and towns have to choose it, and I'm very interested in how it's implemented, because I don't want it to discourage new building, so, or to encourage property owners to evict existing tenants. There need to be protections there, and there need to be protections to make sure that there's still, people will be willing to invest and build new, or we will have people who have rent stabilization, you know, people who've got in, and people who didn't, and that doesn't work either. So in the resolution, we also speak to needing to increase supply and to build more subsidized affordable housing, that 300 unit, almost 300 units that have been built in the last few years. It's really just a start, and I certainly hope that the housing bond bill and anything that comes federally will help us accelerate that. And all of these need to go hand in hand to solve the problem long-term. I also wanted to share the work that people are doing to create cooperative housing and housing on community land trusts. These give residents control, ownership, and affordability preservation, and I've been volunteering with the Valley Alliance for Land Equity, which is forming a community land trust that will steward properties and support other land trusts up and down the valley. So other councilors, your thoughts? Councilor Moulton, and then Councilor Mayori.
Thank you. Thanks to the sponsors, and particularly thanks to all of you who spoke tonight in here and online about your life experience with rent increases that are making it very difficult to stay in Northampton. That was very powerful testimony. So I'm not going to focus on the substance of this, but I do want to speak to the, why it's important, in my view, to pass resolutions like this. We saw earlier this year, Northampton, the council unanimously approved an order for special legislation to ban landlords and brokers from requiring tenants to pay brokers commissions. That was an effort to introduce a home rule petition that would have allowed Northampton to do that. In the interim, this has actually been adopted statewide, and I'd like to think that in some small way, the council's unanimous vote had produced some, certainly a show of support for banning brokers' fees. In the same way, while this, again, would, while the resolution would back the act that would allow individual communities to opt into rent control, which by the way, has been banned in Massachusetts since 1994, when there was a ballot question to outlaw rent control, it was narrowly approved. In this case, if the legislature doesn't act, as we heard tonight, there is now a strong tenant coalition, Homes for All Massachusetts, that is sponsoring a ballot initiative that was certified yesterday by the Attorney General. And the next step is to collect nearly 75,000 signatures from registered voters across the state by December 3rd to get this on the ballot in 2026. So, one way or the other, I think this will come either before the legislature or before the state's voters again, and I think it's important for us in Northampton to help lead the way by signifying our support for rent stabilization, which is why I will vote for the resolution.
Thank you. Councilor Mayori?
Yeah, and I agree that it's really excellent to hear renters' voices elevated, and to hear the compelling stories of folks who live in our community with us. I just wanted to, I mentioned this last time, and you put back on my public health hat, which is, when I would work as a community health worker, that stabilizing rent and knowing, having a stable ground under you as, you know, for your home, is a huge indicator of the health of a community. And it's very hard to have continuous care, and as a, for me, as a health worker, it's hard to reach out when folks don't know where they might be living in a month, they may have to pull their kids from school and leave their community, they may have to leave their jobs. It makes it very difficult to continue care and education and participate in the community that you live in. And, you know, this is part of the attack on the working class. This is the attack to keep people scrambling on this, you know, Maslow's ladder of needs, where they're just constantly trying to get a place to live and keep the basics covered, and they never get to get up, you know, to kind of get to a place of stability and fully embrace where they are, and have their health, you know, and not have that stress. That stress is all-consuming. And so I see it as a real public health issue, and that's the wisdom of the Housing First approach, that if you have housing, you can address a whole myriad of other issues that folks might be experiencing, but without that, it is, it's, the continuity of care is almost impossible. So I'm in full support, and I'm very excited for Massachusetts.
Thank you. Councilor Elkins.
Yeah, and I don't want to echo too much of what anybody said. Thanks to everybody who came out and who organized and helped bring this so that we can weigh in on it. I'm, of course, a yes on this. I just want to sort of echo what Council Moulton said, which is, you know, council, one of the things we do is resolutions, and the resolutions that speak to actionable things at state level, things that our legislators are working on, and then in this case, something that may come before voters, is the most important, bang for your buck kind of resolution that we can, that we can do. So I really, kudos to you guys for coming out and for speaking up and putting, and there's work, as you know, still to do. So we'll pass this resolution. No, from our legislators, Senator Comerford and Rep. Sabadosa, they tell us all the time that these ones that go directly to laws that they're working on, things that they're working on passing, and then something we're going to take to the voters, are really significant to their work. And so it's a really important and gratifying way to get involved, the kind of thing to get involved with, and so I appreciate that. So I'll be happy to vote yes tonight, and I look forward to where us as a community joining with East Hampton, you know, takes this across Commonwealth.
Thank you. Councilor La Barge.
Yes. I support this, like I said at our first reading, 100%, absolutely needed here in the city, and I say throughout the state of Massachusetts, there's no question about it. Also, too, I have many, many seniors in this city who are really concerned here with the price of rental, for just about making it. And we need to really look at this very, very serious here, seriously. And I have to say, if we have to do what we have to do to make sure that everybody can go ahead and live, that's their home, apartments right down the line, and live in our city, with true respect here of having rent control, and I do not have a problem with this at all. This has been going on for a long time, and I am very proud to be able to support this.
Thank you. Councilor Perry.
Yes, I too, as everyone else is in support of this, and I just want to just say, you know, I've been a renter here in Northampton for my entire life, and I used to live on Center Street, and then it was bought by probably one of the most infamous landlords in Northampton, and he wanted to raise their rent, almost $1,000, and it forced me to move to another place, and I found a phenomenal landlord, and we've been there for almost 20 years. And one of the things that I think that is important for this resolution to understand is that, again, renters are part of our community. The space that I have lived in, we've been able to plant trees, plant gardens, be a part of our community, and because we were able to know that our rent wasn't increasing, it not only gave us stability, but also made us feel like we were part of our community. And I think, you know, as we look and try to bring more people into our city and into our community, I think it's important to really, you know, know that everyone who comes to our city is part of the fabric of Northampton.
Thank you.
I would move to approve.
I would second.
Okay, motion made by Councilor Perry, and seconded by Councilor Elkins. Would any other councilors like to speak to this? Okay. Let's do a roll call. I like to do roll calls on, even though we don't have to.
Sure. Councilor La Barge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayori.
Yes.
Councilor Moulton.
Yes.
Councilor Perry.
Yes.
Councilor Rothenberg.
Yes.
Councilor Dubs.
Yes.
Councilor Elkins.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Councilor Clemmer.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to the last item on our agenda, 25.300, an ordinance reducing minimum off-street motor vehicle parking requirements and adjusting bicycle parking requirements. This is in second reading. There, it was amended by Legislative Matters in the Planning Board to replace terraced areas with ground-level patios, an open space definition, and also to increase bicycle parking requirements from two to four per 10,000 square feet for office, hospital, and other medical uses. It received a positive recommendation from the Northampton Housing Partnership, there is a letter attached to the agenda. It received a positive recommendation as amended, 30, with Councilor Mayori absent from Legislative Matters, received a positive recommendation as amended from the Planning Board, a positive recommendation from the Transportation and Parking Commission's Bicycle and Pedestrian Subcommittee. And then, thank you, councilors, for postponing to now, so we didn't have to do this at 11:00 p.m. two weeks ago. Councilor Elkins, would you like to lead us off?
That's a long list of folks who have passed over it, and so I feel like we're not reading the wheres of this again, are we?
No, we read those last time.
Um, no, I, I'm very excited. This is something that Council Jarrett and I had been talking about for quite a long time, in terms of our particular interest in our zoning jam, and interest in housing, and I, and it really is a product of a lot of conversation with departments and with, within elected government, within our boards and commissions, and talking in the community by far. I have actually had a good deal of feedback about this, and almost all of it has been, has been positive. And I've been a little surprised at how, for kind of a boring zoning ordinance in some ways, it has permeated a little bit, and I have been a little surprised at the places that I've heard positive things from. I'm like, oh, I heard about the parking thing, and that's, that's good. I, that's, you know, from folks who don't strike me as zoning wonk jam, you know, folks. So I feel like we've crafted a good incremental stage, incremental legislation. I'm really pleased with the way we've rolled in the biking, the bike parking and the open space. space requirement, and that being responsive to what developers want to be able to provide for their tenants in terms of secure and safe long-term parking, while also, you know, allowing property owners, both developers and, you know, individual property owners who are trying to maximize their own property, to maximize what they need for housing and building more spaces to put more heads over time, and for, to be able to speak to their needs and allow them the flexibility to build more parking if they want it and need it and think that that's appropriate for what they're trying to do, and also give them the flexibility to do less if that's appropriate, and give more room for more beds, more heads to lay. And so I'm proud of this, and I've been happy to work with you, Council Jarrett, on this, and I'm hopeful that you all will support it.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm also excited about it. I really appreciate the thought of, you know, we're trying to house more people and prioritize that over necessarily housing more cars. However, we're not in any way talking about not, people not having cars who want them and need them, that there's nothing in this ordinance that does that in terms of, it's still, and it still requires one spot per housing unit where parking is required at all. I'm just going to summarize, just so we understand what we're talking about, I'll just summarize the changes, because I think there's been some confusion. So it requires one spot per housing unit where parking is required at all. It doesn't touch the central business area, which was talked about, where parking for residential, it doesn't touch the residential parking there. And currently, units over 1,000 square feet require two spots. That's what it's changing. In the central business district, it removes the requirement for gyms, theaters, hotels, et cetera, to build more parking, as public parking is readily available in the central business district. And then it increases the residential bicycle parking requirement to one per unit. It adjusts other uses, and it actually includes a decrease in the requirements for office and medical uses. Even with the amendment, it's still a decrease from what it was before, but that much is not necessary. And it allows bicycle parking to be included in the definition of open space. And I think the, you know, one of the key issues here is that tenants and homeowners pay for parking requirements in their rental mortgage. That happens right now. If you don't need that many spaces, you shouldn't have to pay for it. If you live in a unit that's 1,100 square feet now, you pay for those two parking spaces, whether you need them or not. And some need them and some do not. And as Councilor Elkins said, it helps homeowners by making, adding another unit either less expensive on the property or possible at all. There's some cases where you just could not add an ADU because of the required parking. And I just read a study that lowering parking requirements increases home building more than legalizing ADUs or apartment buildings. Oregon was cited, also Washington, Buffalo, New York. Measures like these led to more housing being built. And, yeah, I think the way it is most in line with our sustainability plan and our climate goals is about the, when you have more parking, it requires more space between everything. That increases travel times and encourages sprawling development. And so to encourage more walkable neighborhoods where housing is close to services, you're building less parking if it's not needed is important. And it's, this isn't just for, the experience is not just for large cities with extensive public transit. So many small cities have eliminated these mandates entirely, and there are not, the problems that people are talking about are not happening. If this, and also, this isn't even talking about eliminating them, this is a small step. If it goes well, we could move to reduce it further. If it does not, we can roll it back. It's slow change. And I did want to speak also to, as I said, it doesn't change the residential requirements in central business. I'm certainly concerned about the needs of people in affordable housing developments that are right downtown. But in tight spaces such as downtown, you, it is a direct trade-off between number of units and parking. If more parking was required, it would almost certainly reduce the number of housing units that could be built, either because of physical space or because it would add unreasonably to the cost, say, if you built an underground parking garage. So I hope that there can be flexibility so that if people need to live in a place where parking is provided, that those organizations that are managing can assign based on need and have an enforce. It sounded like a bunch of issues was the enforcement issue of not people arriving and seeing that their spot was taken. And, or if those organizations have multiple properties that, to make it easy for people to transfer to properties where there is more parking. So that's, that would be my request for those nonprofits. So I'll stop there and let other councilors take a turn. Councilor Mayory?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up about...
Councilor LaBarge?
I'm getting on. I'm glad you brought it up about affordability. We're hearing about the lumber problems over there, the lumberyard problems with parking, and asking for more accessible for handicapped parking. And I'm hoping something will be done about that, because you're looking at a need, a need. So otherwise, this, I'm glad you explained this very thoroughly, because I was a little hesitant about it. I did attend the Legislative Matters meeting that you had by Zoom, and I heard exactly, I mean, almost a year of going through this order right here. And that's a lot of meetings and a lot of, you know, communication going out there and hearing from residents in the city. So I don't have a problem with this. I really don't. I see changes in it that I'm happy about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But this was introduced in July, although we certainly have been, you know, listening to people about the related issues for longer. Councilor Mayory?
Yeah, I have a lot of thoughts. I'll try, I've been really mulling this over, and I was, I really struggling with it. And I would like to go through what my concerns were and where I've landed. And please correct me if my assumptions are wrong, because I think that that's part of what's been happening, is there's, again, I kind of liked what I said about the petition last time, is there's these very real issues that we hear about in our city. And then, and then I feel like there's sometimes a disconnect about what's actually, you know, before us. And when I, when I actually sat down and looked at the zoning districts and, you know, I had a different picture of where I start, where my concerns, where I started. So I'm going to go through those. And I, you know, in hindsight, and this is responsibility of all of council, you know, we sent it to housing and TP, and Bike and Ped. This might have been a good community resources, someplace to go through scenarios and kind of answer to them, to have some clarification. I mean, it kind of came up after we had gone through the process, but I can hear that that is true. So my concerns, my concern foremost is working families. And just really where we are at in this, you know, in the time we're at, and all the pressures, the astronomical increase in groceries and housing and all those pressures, and really not wanting to add the burden to folks who are already kind of stressed out or experiencing stress. So that was my concern. Will this do that? Will this, you know, will this be like somebody who has a disability or a parent with kids and groceries, you know, circling, looking for parking, you know, things that are just stressful and add stress? So you shouldn't be on the backs of, you know, of folks if we want to, you know, want to try this, and because it's always going to be people are more privileged who are kind of padded from any kind of consequence. I also am not someone who particularly trusts the invisible hand of the market. I think we have desperate, you know, cohort of people looking for housing, and they will take housing even if it doesn't totally meet their needs, and they'll probably pay too much. So I'm not really compelled by that. I'm also not really compelled by the idea that, that we want to usher in people without, you know, who don't, you know, will be kind of naturally selecting for people who don't need more cars, because I actually think what we need in Northampton is more working families. We need them for our schools, we need them for our economy. We have an older, we have a very older population, and we need to encourage those folks. And we live in Western Mass, and I, you know, when I first started on council, and I, you know, I've been very involved in so many climate initiatives, I kept looking to Brookline and Cambridge, who we are kind of like politically, but we don't live there, and we don't have those, the access to public transportation. And so Western Mass is hard like that. You do spend a lot of time in the cars commuting. So those were my concerns, and yeah, but the thing is, yeah, so the More Healy report, again, that was kind of focused on Eastern Mass. And I, as somebody who has three kids and has to have a car, and I hate my car too, because I spend an average of two hours a day driving every day. That's just, and that's not like long, that's just 15 minutes here, 15, 20 minutes here. It's just, it's like that. And I do think that, this is on a little aside, but we need to find a way to make the buses free, because that not only is an equity issue, it also is another thing that compels parents to need to have a car if they cannot afford to pay for that fee. But that's, that's an aside. So that was all my, like, but then when I sat down and I looked and I poured over the actual ordinance, I realized that these are my fears, and that's not what's going on in this ordinance, that a lot of the issues that we've heard about would not, this ordinance is not going to impact that. It's not going to impact, downtown isn't part of this district, and please let me know if I'm not, you know, if I'm misspeaking. But a lot of the issues that we heard, this is not, this is not going to do that. It's already, this is for, I certainly, I'm, the biking, the bike parking is, that's something we've needed for a long time. For me, the AD, the accessory dwelling units, that's something that, to me, that requiring more than one space or, you know, and not giving flexibility in that situation is really almost defeating the purpose. So that was a no-brainer. But I was concerned about, you know, the certain echelon of folks who, you know, who may be stuck looking. And I was also concerned about wear and tear on, wear and tear on public roads, shifting the kind of wear and tear of parking to the public sphere versus private. So I went through this for a few days, but I think that where I landed is that this is not what's going on in this ordinance, and this will actually add housing and the possibility of housing. And so I think we really need to be careful about, like, my own, you know, I had a bunch of, you heard all my cranky concerns, and really looking at what's before us and going through those scenarios and seeing that that's not what's going on. And there are issues we've heard about, and our community deserves help with those, like the parking, you know, at lumberyard. But let's not conflate that with what's in front, before us here. And I do want to, I did also want to thank the sponsors, because it's really, it's really tough to write zoning. It's like, you have to be precise, it's nitpicky, and I do applaud you for spending, I'm sure you spent so much time on this, and I wanted to recognize your work on that as well. So, yeah, so correct me if I made any mischaracterizations, but what I'm seeing is what kind of public comments we've heard, this wouldn't actually impact that. This isn't what's going on in this ordinance. But, yeah.
Yeah, well, you spoke to central business.
Right.
It doesn't change anything for the residential.
Right.
Central business. It does allow, if there was a new gym.
Right.
Theater, hotel, that they would not be subject to the minimums, as they, as there's parking in the parking garage, there's parking in various lots all around the central business district. So we would, the reality is that those businesses are not going to come in if they have to build their own parking all around.
Right.
In the central business, where the property is so expensive that you just can't do that. Like, if the Calvin Theater had to build hundreds of parking spots in order to exist, it would not, it would not be built there.
Right.
It would be built further out. And so that, that, so it does, it does touch some businesses in central business, but it doesn't do anything to the residential requirements.
Right. And if you would just allow me two more comments, which was that I learned today, you know, thinking about my own ward, which actually would not be, I just don't think, words, it would be impacted in the same way around Florence Center, but I'm, certainly Leeds would be, that driveways, you know, that driveways are part of that parking, you know, I, so, and maybe Carolyn can say it more eloquently, but any kind of driveway that's long at all is parking. Yeah. So, and so all my concerns, because I am, I'm part of, I'm the problem, like, I got a car, big car, I got three kids, groceries, and I still just need one parking spot. And let's just remember that everyone is still getting a parking spot, anyone who's who is a disability, anyone who's had, you know, me, who's, you know, got a lot of things balancing, who will never get on a bike with my kids, and I agree about bike safety, I think we really need to look at that. That would be, because that's not the alternative for me. It's never going to be biking for me. Me alone and my, you know, retrofitted electric bike, you know, for fun, but not, not for daily use. So we all, everyone will get a parking spot. What we're talking about is do we need more, to, and when I, when I actually looked at the data, the data, you know, doesn't support that that, that we need to require that. So that's where I've landed.
Thank you. Other councilors? Councilor Rothenberg?
Well, I just wonder, Councilor Mayory, in your assessment of that, where does the two-parent household or the four-roommate household fit in?
Do you want, should we hear from everyone and then go back? Okay. Councilor Dubs?
Before I make a statement, I'd like to ask a clarifying question.
Yeah.
I was wondering if you could...
Oh, your microphone.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Yeah, so I had a clarifying question about the last whereas. I was wondering if you could clarify what is meant by that it would further enhance sidewalk maintenance? Could you be specific about that?
I think I know.
Yeah, I think, Councilor Elkins, you added this one?
Oh, I don't remember who added it, but I think I know what the response is.
Okay, go ahead.
And I would also call in Director Mish, if she has anything to add on that. You know, every curb cut, you know, every parking spot, every driveway that is a curb cut is a, is a, is a potential snow maintenance problem, and also a cross-traffic problem in terms of safety. So honestly, it's been a while, so I don't remember exactly where that whereas statement, but that's immediately what comes to mind when we start talking about the, you know, that kind of issue. Parking lots by definition create snowbanks, create curb cuts, create things that, you know, add to the walkability of people coming across the sidewalk.
Yeah, I can just add, well, the whereas is, whereas new parking management techniques and revenues can be used to further enhance street, bicycle, and sidewalk maintenance. So, for example, downtown, we have our parking division, and all of the revenue that goes into that system maintains that system and maintains downtown and, you know, a bunch of different, in a bunch of different... different, in a bunch of different areas in terms of the, the, you see the workers watering the plants and putting up the lights, and that's all part of the parking division. So those, those areas, you know, enhance that. And there, there's something called a parking benefit district, which maybe, I don't know, Carolyn, you would, you would consider downtown to be that, but it's where you dedicate the revenues that you get from parking to helping that district and improving the, you know, the sidewalk clearing and the, all of the different aspects of, of maintenance that are required in that district. Do you, do you want to add on to that? And I, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I think you all said it, and I think those last two whereas clauses are sort of connected in terms of the one right before that about different parking management techniques, again, sort of feed into a self-supporting kind of system. And so, you know, these are just sort of identifying ways that funds could be used. Of course, it's not guaranteeing that, precisely that these, you know, all of these maintenance issues would be addressed, but it's just another benefit of using the parking management and maintenance system to support infrastructure.
Councilor Elkins?
Can I just circle back? Because it was me now, I remember. I'm sorry, I was a little off track. You know, the, the thing that I think of, because one of the things that I always like about sort of parking and parking fees and how we are able to use it creatively is this sort of expansive idea of it. Like, it's parking, but it's not like just cars and parking lots and lines. It is these sidewalks and things. And one of the things that I recall, we got a, one of the things that was, that was in the capital plan was the little mini.
Bombardier.
What, bombardier? It's an unfortunate name. Or like, but, but it was, it's like a little mini street sweeper, sidewalk alley sweeper. And I'm, I'm actually a big fan of, of thinking as creatively and expansively as, as we can about parking and parking fees to maximize it to then assets that then can be used in other ways throughout the city as, as we cycle them through our parking needs. So that, it was me. It's been a while.
Thank you. Councilor Dobbs, did you want to?
Sure. Yeah, well, thank you for clarifying about that. I, I have a lot of thoughts about this. It concerns me that many residents in Northampton are disabled and, as a disabled person, I don't drive actually, but there are many disabled people who do drive. And they are able to walk sometimes also, you know, not everybody has a wheelchair to get around. Some people have limited mobility even though they're able to walk and, and they need these, they need, we need parking, as much parking as we can have, I believe. I believe that reducing parking in Northampton will, will force people who aren't able to make those changes in their lives to make, to make changes that they're not, that, like, you know, if they have to park somewhere far away, then they don't necessarily have the option to walk the far distance that they might need to walk. I believe that our, I believe strongly that our sidewalks and our curb cuts are not in the, in the proper condition to encourage people to, to use them more. I mean, they're really dangerous and unsafe for, for people of all abilities and disabilities. I don't think that, almost forcing them to, to have the, forcing them to use the option of sidewalks and curb cuts that aren't safe for them, I don't see, don't think we're there yet, is what I'm trying to say. I don't think we're there yet as a city. There's a lot of people in Northampton that don't work in Northampton, but they live here. They have, they, they need their cars. They need, they need to drive around and they don't have the ability to, to just like switch their lives around. They need to work outside of the city and I don't think this will benefit them either. Yeah, that's basically how I feel right now. I don't want to be harsh, but I feel like this is not fully based in the reality that we live in right now. I feel like this is a reality that, this is, or this is almost a fantasy type, type situation where people are more able-bodied and, and working here in Northampton. And that's just not, not the reality that we live in. So I personally feel that I, that I won't support this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselors who haven't spoken? Councilor Moulton?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that perspective, Councilor Dobbs. Thanks for voicing that. I also appreciated tonight hearing, it's the sponsors, Councilors Jarrett and Elkins, talk about how this is an incremental step. It's a modest change. And it's, it is, again, to emphasize, it is not eliminating parking requirements, it is reducing them. The juxtaposition of, of that with Councilor Mayory's very thoughtful analysis of the fears that she had based on her own experiences perhaps and as well as hearing from other residents, and then examining what's happening with this ordinance and coming to her conclusion, that was very compelling and I appreciate that. In my view, this is an ordinance that will address two crucial issues. One is housing, the other is climate, our, the city's climate goals. On housing, I, I accept the, I accept the conclusions of the statewide commission that this will, that eliminating, or reducing parking requirements will increase the supply of housing across all income levels. But more particularly, I want to point to the letter in support that came from the North Housing, Northampton Housing Partnership that read, that reads in part, quote, "These changes directly address a key constraint on housing production such as financial feasibility. A perfect example of this is the proposed 33 King Street development by Valley, CDC, and the Community Builders. The scale and density of this crucial housing project would be nearly impossible to achieve if it were required to provide excessive onsite parking for every unit," end quote. And I also believe that, you know, decreasing the required parking for motor vehicles and encouraging additional parking for, for bicycles does meet the city's carbon emission goals. And it's, again, it's not eliminating cars and requiring people to, to have bicycles. It's allowing for a mix of both. And finally, you know, I, I hear the argument that the infrastructure doesn't exist yet in terms of public transit, and that's true. Western Massachusetts has a posity of, of public transportation. We can't compel the PVTA to increase bus service, but we can through this, this zoning. We can create a more welcoming environment for people who don't and don't, don't want to or don't need to use motor vehicles. And by welcoming folks who want to, want to rely on alternative modes of transportation, that will create increased ridership, I believe, which will be an impetus for PVTA to, to make a more robust bus service. This is not a radical idea. We heard tonight that other communities and the entire state of Oregon have implemented it, some of, some of which have eliminated entirely, and the outcomes have been positive. So I will support this, this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilor Connor?
Yeah, I think it's interesting that this is happening on the same night as the reinstabilization resolution. And this will allow more apartments to be built and people will be able to have more properties on their land. They don't have to provide an extra parking spot for people. In the document you sent that was attached to the resolution, Unlocking Housing Production Commission, it's, in there, I read that it could cost up to $50,000 to, for parking, to build parking spaces into the, the buildings. Underground is, you know, really expensive to, if you provide underground parking and, you know, it's not a free parking spot. You're going to pay, the renters are going to pay for it. So, and not everybody needs it, especially if you're near the city or near a bus line. So it will also allow for the, you know, it, it won't be factored into your rent if you don't have all those extra parking spots. So I want to thank you both for, for fighting this ordinance and bringing it to us tonight. I think it's really important to have it here and people will, I think people will be able to work around the parking, you know, there's a lot of street parking and in the garages and especially outside of downtown, it's easier to find parking. So I'm going to support this tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Perry?
Sure. You know, I was part of Legislative Matters, we talked about this for a bunch, and I do want to say, Councilor Mayory, I'm very thankful for you going through your thought process. You were missed in those meetings and it's really nice to see how you, you broke it apart. And I think you, you hit the nail on the head for me is that when you really look at it, a lot of the fears aren't affected by this. As Council Moulton said, and other folks have said, this does not eliminate parking minimums. You still have, have a space for everything. And in fact, you could still, there's no maximum. It actually takes out the, the maximum. I think there was one there before that. So, you know, that, that'll work. I really like this, this in terms of ADU as well. You know, there was someone who came to our Legislative Matters talking about how they wanted to move a family member in and in order to meet the zoning requirements, they had to put in extra spaces, which constrained their ability to build. You know, that's, you're just bringing a family member there, but you had to add two more parking spaces to your property, which for me didn't really make much sense and neither did it to the person. I also, you know, again, I've already said at this meeting, I rent and there are four units on my property and that means you needed eight parking spaces. And if you've ever been to my house, it's nice because a bunch of people could park in my house, but it also removes some of the green spaces. So it limited the space that we, you know, we've worked around it and built gardens and all sorts of little spaces. But, you know, I see this as a way to, to kind of, you know, if you're, if you're a renter, if you're someone who wanted to have a garden, this will allow folks to have more green spaces to enjoy. And then I also like the, the part about businesses, not having the constraint of if you open a business, having to have all the parking. It's hard enough to find good rental spaces or places to open new businesses, and I think that'll relieve a lot of pressure from that as well. And so with all that being said, I think it is a modest step in a direction. It is not too heavy-handed and again, it's, it's really affecting the areas that needed some work on it. So I will support this.
Let's see, we had a question from Councilor Rothenberg. Did you want to answer? Do you want to repeat your question for Councilor Mayory?
I mean, you don't need to. I mean, I can just make my comments. It was just a response to your, everyone gets one car. My question was, you know, how did you, how did you approach the two working people, households or the four roommate households like we heard about tonight?
Yeah, okay. Which, I mean, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. No, well, so if someone had groceries or a disability, it's clearly that car would, would park in the, you know, in the parking spot that was most, you know, convenient to the, closest to the, the one required one. I don't, you don't, I don't, I don't see that too, I mean, certainly if you have a two-family household, I mean, I've never been in a two-family situation where, I mean, a two, sorry, two, yeah, two, two, two parents where both parked, had to park like right up to the house. I've never, not even in Leeds. I have a one, one car, I have a one, you know, I have a one-car garage. And so I'm just saying, to me, the thing is, can, can you have the convenience of that, you know, and necessity of being able to load, unload, or issues with disability? I, I don't know that, you know, that you need that for four people or, you know, even two. But you, and certainly there's, there'll be parking, we're talking about, will there be parking, you know, most likely, you know, closest to the, you know, dedicated parking versus park, other types of parking. So to me, I'm satisfied with there being one, you know, dedicated spot for the unit. Yeah.
Did you want to make more points?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
So, speaking just as to Ward Three, I can't see this working for us, right? Because we have a lot of people who come there to park, who work downtown. We have a lot of multi, multi-person dwellings. We already don't have enough parking. We already have streets that are too narrow, especially in the winter, and we already have concerns about emergency vehicles not being able to get down those streets because the parking is so crowded. We have a lot of streets that have a double yellow line down the middle and they're really one, one car at a time, one direction of travel at a time is all that's possible. And it's just not really safe for us in our current parking situation. And so I think about also people who have home health aides who come to visit them. You know, that's the case for people living in the lumberyard, for sure. They, they need more than one parking spot for people who are there to care for them on a daily basis. We have, you know, this idea of being close to services. My question is sort of like, close to what services? It's not really how our downtown functions. It's like a center where everything that we need is there. You know, we have sort of a tourist downtown and certainly we have some shops, but the public transportation that we have isn't really adequate for people. There's not good public transportation for people who have power chairs. You know, there's just, period. There's not enough and not enough times of day. And I, I don't think we're going to be eliminating cars. I think we're just going to be increasing pressure for Ward Three and I think we're going to be giving, you know, kind of a handout to developers. This really does allow them to maximize profit. And I agree that I don't see this as being based in the reality of Ward Three. I see this being based in a future fantasy of Ward Three. And I think it's a great thing to aspire to, you know, that you get this to be a city that people don't need a car to live in. But I think then, when you do that work, then you reward yourself with this. I don't think you start here and say, go ahead, developers, build stuff that only people who already don't depend on cars can, can afford in the first place, right? And then have that leisure, leisurely lifestyle. Because I think it is true, if you build it, they will come. I think that's who will come. And who won't be able to stay are the people who are already struggling to live and work and rent in Ward Three. And we pay for parking either way. You know, there's not a lot of parking downtown. It's very expensive to park downtown. You're lucky if you can find a free street spot, but usually when you do, that means you're displacing a, a household member who, who lives in the neighborhood who needs to park. You know, which is fine. We all, we all get around it, you know, and Graves Avenue is no stranger to having to text someone and say, hey, can you move your car today because somebody else is coming? You know, when you have a really tight village, you can make that work, but a lot of us don't know each other. You know, even when the city comes to do work on our street, they don't have a convenient way of contacting people to tell them to move their cars and stuff like that. So I don't see where we in Ward Three do this. I would be more interested in supporting it if it was just something like waivers for ADUs. You know, I, I don't see why it needs to be so broad. I think it's the over-broadness of it that really gives me pause and makes me feel like it's really just going to be a developer loophole. And yes, there will be some positive benefits, like with the ADUs. But I think for Ward Three in particular, especially because that's where a lot of the development is happening and is intended to happen, it's really not going to work well for our community and it is going to work well for builders.
Thank you. Councilor Elkins?
Yeah, I just want to circle back and I'll try to be brief because I'm not above trying and giving, and, and, and giving it a shot at trying to get your vote, Council Dobbs. The one thing I would say is, is that this is an incremental, incremental legislation. It doesn't even go as far as what's recommended in the, in the governor's report. It doesn't even go as far as what's recommended in the governor's report. And it's an incremental change that is carried out over a long process, that is the actual building and development. So, I mean, one thing to keep in mind is that nobody's ripping out parking spaces. We have all the existing parking spaces, years of what we currently have, which is the two, two spaces per unit, which means that all across the city, where you have people taking advantage of the two-family by right that we have now, or whether they built in response to that zoning change or built before, you have, it's rarely the case that you just have, let's say you have a two-family. It's rarely the case that you actually only have four. You probably have a garage, maybe you have two garages, and the driveway itself is probably two parking places itself, which means you actually have six parking spots for a two-family. So, and none of that's going away. We're not, we're not taking any of that away. The other thing to, relative to your discussion, which I thought was a very thoughtful way to think about it, of sort of what our fears are and our concerns of sort of our daily lives, what it really speaks to me is that we have a real onus to have a variety of kinds of housing across the city. I mean, the difficulty with like capital A affordable housing is if you relegate it all to one place where there's, there isn't parking and it's, or there's no parking requirement, so it's gonna have minimal, when what we strive for, and I think we're doing a good job of it, in particular in the, in the last few years when we've been adding these units, is we've been adding a variety of kinds of units across the city. It's not the case that if, if what you need is affordable housing, your only option is the lumberyard. It's not increasingly the case. If you need affordable housing, there are options that are appropriate for the family, the busy family that needs to be driving around with a car and, and going, you know, back and forth. And then the, you know, the young person who's single and working downtown, who can, who can walk. And, you know, get them here, they meet their person, and they start a family, and then, and then hopefully we have a place for them to move, that will meet their growing family's needs, right? Like, that's the long-term goal. That's the incremental change I hope for, and I hope we're facilitating with this. So, no pressure. You're very thoughtful, and I appreciate everything you said and your perspective. And, and, you know, I'm proud of what we're doing here, and I, and I do think, I do think that we're doing a meaningfully helpful thing for the long term. So that's it. Sorry, it was a lot of words, and it's late.
Thank you.
I wanted, I guess, clarification for that.
Your mic.
Yeah. Oh, yes, thank you. I just, I, I can understand your concerns for your ward. I just want to clarify, though, that when we talk about downtown, again, and I had that thought too, especially with Pitcher Main Street. Are we gonna be, you know, taking, but, but from what I can gather, downtown, this is not, this will not impact downtown. And that's a separate conversation that we need to have, and we started having about snow removal and snow emergencies, which I thought was really critical in discussions about kind of the stress of, you know, of all that. But this is, but that's, again, this is why, this is not what this ordinance does. Your concerns that you were saying about downtown, or are the health aides down there? I mean, that's, this is, this will not impact that, is my understanding. So, but I guess that's my, I guess that was the question.
Could I just briefly respond, if that was a you to me?
Well, actually, I was asking the sponsors to clarify about downtown, like, you know, in terms of...
Your mic.
The zoning downtown.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Because I really looked at the zoning map to see, you know, because my opinion changes depending on where that would happen in the city. And so that was really important to me, to understand that, you know, the places that are, that we've heard from a lot are not actually the ones that are impacted, right?
I'll go next. The, to Council Rothenberg's concerns, I mean, we do have a situation, because Ward Three, I mean, Ward Three is part of downtown, but also if we're talking about the urban residential that borders, there's push outward from downtown that in terms of, as she said, workers who are working downtown and go onto the residential streets and go sort of as far out to save the, I think it's about two, the cheapest parking is about 25 cents an hour, so just $2 for your shift, to save that, and that's, that's understandable. But one of the ways that we should address that and should take that up in transportation and parking, and/or councilors can bring changes in terms of whether there should be metered parking or time-limited parking during the day, or residential parking permits. Those are all things that, you know, we can discuss, we can decide on to address the specific concerns of neighborhoods. I spoke to Chief Peles today, because I was concerned about the question of emergency vehicles, and he said the greatest concerns are where people park illegally next to the intersections, or they park too close to the intersection, and then the large apparatus can't make that turn. The day-to-day parking, or the legal parking is, is not, there's very rarely, he said, is there, is there any concern with the large vehicles not being able to get by, even on the, the narrow streets. The, I wanted to talk about public transit, because I'm a regular rider of public transit, more so since, you know, I've been having some health issues in the past year, and so I bike, bike less than I used to. And there's so many people in Northampton who rely on public transit every day. Many, you know, many of folks live in my ward, and I see them, whether they're walking or taking the bus. There are people with wheelchairs coming on frequently, people with power chairs navigating, and then getting, the PVTA has added systems that make it easier, so that the driver doesn't have to come and latch everything, but this arm comes down and secures the wheelchair. And with the Fair Share Amendment and the transportation that's going to regional transit authorities, rather, the funding that's going to regional transit authorities, we're seeing an increase in frequency of service. We now have an express bus that goes from downtown Northampton, makes one stop at the Holyoke Mall and goes to Springfield. It's 35 minutes from downtown Northampton to downtown Springfield, from seven something in the morning to nine at night, every half hour. And that's, that, every time I ride that bus, the ridership is higher. When they, went from one hour to every half hour, the ridership went up, because the frequency is what's necessary. And so these incremental changes and these improvements in public transit are one of the, are a really important step to allow people to live with fewer cars. And the, this incremental step of parking requirements means more, more housing, more people can live closer together, which is what public transit needs to be successful. It's a chicken-and-egg problem, and I think that's why it's important that we're taking an incremental step in terms of parking requirements, and we have been taking incremental steps in terms of public transit. And I hope, you know, there are many more. So, to, you know, there are many, many, many people who rely on public transit, whether it's students or people who can't drive or choose not to, and I don't want to put down their experience by saying you can't get around. There are, it certainly could be better, it certainly could be later, it could be more frequent. There's lots of room for improvement, but I think that taking these incremental steps is important. Okay, that's all for me for now. Councilor Clemmer?
Yeah, I just want to add that in Village Hill, I have a one-car garage, and the majority of the people there have one-car garages and one parking spot. And there are, there is some street parking, but it's, there's always spots available, and, you know, we make it work, and you double up, or one person's in the garage and one person's in front of the garage, or my neighbor and I share spots if we're gonna be away, and, you know, we let each other use it. And, you know, when I first moved there, we had two cars, you know? I worked down at Bay State, and I had a, and I took call, I had, I needed a car. And, but it worked fine, you know? You just get used to it, and, and, you know, everybody helps each other out, and if it snows and you have to get your car off the street. And if we didn't have that, I mean, on my block alone, there'd probably be at least three less houses than there are because of the double garages that you would need, you know, possibly more. So, you know, probably in the neighborhood, at least 20 houses would not be able to be there, because we would need two-car garages for everybody. You know, so that's 20 families that are, that have housing now that wouldn't have it. So...
Council, well, let's go to Council Dobbs, who, and we're doing the second round now, so...
Thanks.
Keeping track of who's...
Okay. I just wanted to gently push back on a statement that was made about there only being, about, about people, about not knowing any families that have two disabled people that need cars. There are, they do exist. You might not know them, but they do exist. There are families that have multiple disabled people. Sometimes a husband and wife will both be disabled, and they need that parking. And personally, I feel like we should be encouraging more parking for those people, more accessible parking, and not reducing any of that parking. So I stand, my position stands.
Mayor Sherr?
I just wanted to add something quickly to what you were talking about, about the public transportation, that actually, Council Maori, you made me think of, which is, I just want people to know that PVTA has extended their fare-free program through June 30th, 2026. So you'd mentioned that you want buses to be free, so they actually, they are until next June.
But you were talking about school buses.
Yeah, I was, but my, my kids are actually really enjoying the free, the free PVTA as well. Just one of those things where, I don't, I don't know, it's not, it's funny, once it went free, they felt like they could, they'd love to take it now. I don't know. Man, they're really cheap. But, yeah, so it's, I see more kids, you know, not, you know, being able to do that. So, but yeah, no, I was talking about eliminating, you know, the, eliminating the backlog of cars that happens at drop-off and, you know, for those who don't, who feel they can't pay for it, the, the school buses, yeah.
Okay. Is anyone else who hasn't spoken the second time? I counted your very first question and then another, so we're, okay, back to, actually, Council Elkins was, had, wanted to speak the third time, and then we'll go to...
No, I was gonna go ahead and move to approve, but I can wait.
Okay. Councilor Rothenberg?
I just wanted to thank Council Dobbs for pointing that out. My vote is still gonna be no, and that's part of my decision. I also want to note the wealth disparity of the people that we heard from about this and which side of the issue they fell on. I hope you noticed that as well. You summed up pretty well that we are an ecosystem with downtown in Ward Three. So whether or not they're changing, our needs are already really highly compacted. And what we're telling you, and we've been telling you, is we need more parking. We need more parking in Ward Three. I appreciate that you let me know that Chief Peles is not aware of how impacted our streets are, because we have lots of videos and photos that we will now know that we need to send him. So he's aware that we have access problems. The buses take, what, two people with wheelchairs at a time? You know? I'm interested in your concept about how it's a chicken-and-egg problem. I'll look into that. But I also think the city needs to and can step it up, especially for things like providing care for transportation for people who need to use wheelchairs. I don't see why we couldn't be making some one-time expenses for that, and maybe hiring staff for that. I really don't think it's fair to just say, we need to wait, we need to wait, we need to wait before we ever deal with our community's needs. These are pressing needs. So I appreciate that we had the opportunity to cover some of these things that are important to Ward Three tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. PVTA also has wheelchair vans, and they have a whole system for, for people who need to get around that the current, that the fixed route system doesn't.
With limited availability.
Let's see if there's anything else. Oh, yeah, to Councilor Dobbs, the, it sounds like you're concerned that in every case, there will not be, like, we're, you're assuming that every new housing, that every new housing unit that gets built will only have one spot. And that is, you know, when you look at what happens when, when parking minimums are removed, that is not the case. There is a variety. There are some that have one spot, there are some that have two spots. And those are, will, because people need, some people need two spots, and they, they choose apartments or houses that have those. So I hear your concern, because yes, people in those, that situation should absolutely have two spots. Should we require every single person or every single unit to have that many spots when they may not be needed? So that's the gentle pushback. Okay. Was there, someone wanted to do a motion?
I would like to move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion made by Council Elkins and seconded by Council Clemmer. More discussion? Okay, roll call, please, on approval.
Councilor Maori?
Yes.
Councilor Moulton?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Rothenberg?
No.
Councilor Dobbs?
No.
Councilor Elkins?
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councilor Clemmer?
Yes.
And Councilor Labarge?
Okay, that passes with seven yes votes and two no votes. Thanks, everyone. It's only 10 o'clock, and that is the last thing on our agenda, so I would...
To adjourn?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second you.
Okay. Motion made by Council Maori and seconded by Council Perry. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. We are adjourned. See you in two weeks.
It's funny...